It is six o'clock and we will bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you and welcome to the City of West Melbourne's regular council meeting tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker's card, which are located by the door, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk who sits at the end of the dais. After you've been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chairs. Speakers will be given up to three minutes to speak. All right, we'll start off with presentations and proclamations. We'll have new employee introductions. Dan Ferry? There you are. Yes, please introduce your new employee. David Aponi? Doesn't look like a David Aponi. Although it could be, I don't know.
So, this is Jasmine Baker. She's a vet and she's been here now how long? Yeah, so I'll let her speak. My speech is short and sweet like always, so.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jasmine Baker.
Hi Jasmine, would you like to say a few words or anything?
I'm happy to be here. I enjoy working with everyone.
Speaking to the mic?
I enjoy working with everyone in the building department. It's a great place to be.
All right, thank you. Where did you come from?
Well, I've been working for myself, running my own businesses. And before that, I was a teacher for two years. And before that, I was in the military.
Great, and what did you do there?
I was a personal administrative specialist for the Army.
Wow, okay, very nice. Thank you very much for coming, thank you.
And Mayor David was ill today, so he is not here.
Okay, all right, we don't have a dual person here. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming and starting. All right, next is Finance Director. Oh, we need a photo.
Get a picture. That's your turn.
Okay, all right, next is Finance Director Candace Blake. We'll introduce Payroll Specialist Amber Hedgepath.
Hi, good evening. It is my honor to introduce Amber Hedgepath. She is replacing Marty Garcia, who is retiring as our payroll specialist. She has been training with Marty for the last five weeks, about five weeks. She comes to us with six to seven years of payroll experience on the private side, so we're getting her kind of, you know, learning the public sector and everything with that. And we're very excited to have her here.
Welcome Amber, would you like to say a few things? A few words?
We're just, I'm really happy to be here. It's definitely a different view from the private sector, but it's been exciting and everybody's been very welcoming.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, welcome. All right, and third, the Recreation Director Erin Murphy? After the photo? I'll catch on, I'm new here. Erin Murphy will introduce Special Population Coordinator Lindsay Welch.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm very excited to introduce Lindsay Welch. She is a certified recreation therapist, which does, if anyone knows, that's like a unicorn in our field, so we are super excited to have her here in our recreation department, so I'll let her speak.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Happy to be here. Happy to be serving the City of West Melbourne. I am Lindsay Welch. I recently moved here from Key West, Florida. My husband's active duty Coast Guard, so he is on Coast Guard Cutter Vigilant over at the port. As Erin mentioned, I'm a recreation therapist, was and have been wanting to get into community recreation for a long time now. Background with geriatrics to pediatrics, working in hospitals in a variety of settings, but very happy to be here and working with this population and really excited to bring some new and exciting programs to the community.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, for the photo, we'll turn for the photo. Okay. You're excused. Okay, all right, waiting for Megan. Okay, next is we have some positions to fill here on one of our boards. Megan's going to handle this.
All right. As you saw in your agenda packet, we are trying to fill some vacancies on the code enforcement board. There are currently four vacancies, two regular positions and two alternate positions. We received two applications from Mrs. Barbara Tam and Michael Seal. Their applications are in the packet for your review. And you all have seen what their requirements of the code enforcement board are, and I'm sure you're very familiar with that board. So if the council would like, I see Ms. Tam in the audience, I have not met Mr. Seal yet, so.
He's here.
He's here. Hi! And so they can come forward if you all have questions for them.
All right, would we like to start off, does council have a preference which one they'd like to start with, or we'll just go ladies first and Ms.? Okay, Ms. Tam?
Yeah?
Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Barbara Tam. I am a resident of Bar for forty plus.
Speaking to the microphone.
Forty-plus years and retired about four years ago from, well, at the time it's L-3 Harris. And in retirement, I'm like looking for something to do, to be useful in my, in my community. And when I read the little, the little pamphlet that comes in with the water bill, it said, oh, volunteers needed. And so I thought, oh, I'll give it a try, so.
All right, thank you. I don't see any lights on here, no questions. Anyone want to make a motion? Or we should just go on to the next person and listen to Mr. Seal?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tam.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I know my name, Michael Seal. After six years in the United States Army, I became a nurse and I'm still a nurse, although I am a doctoral candidate of public administration. My dissertation is on mitigating veteran suicide rates. That's been something. It's going on for two years, pulling back and forth. I'm dealing with public entities on a consistent basis, mainly begging for money. I'm also, I also hold a Juris Master and, but I'm still a practicing nurse. I, I'm very interested in code enforcement and how it applies to the communities and keeping them, I could use the word beautiful, but keeping them presentable to the public. Because there's nothing worse, where I'm originally from, I've watched my neighborhoods deteriorate because of lack of code enforcement. I'd like to prevent that here. I've been a part-timer here for forty years, now I'm a full-timer for a couple of years. I don't want to see happen here what happened to my home. So if I can be of help, I've got a lot more to learn from the board than I can offer right now, but I'm here to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. We're happy to have you full-time. That's always exciting when part-time residents come to be full-time. I also got my doctorate in public administration. When is your research going to be completed?
December.
That's exciting, so it's.
Would be a nice Christmas present.
So you'll have a little bit more free time after December?
Well, after I defend.
Yes.
Which is probably around February.
All right, that's exciting. Do we have other questions from council?
We do, we have another, Mr. Frampton?
Not a question.
You're gonna make a motion? All right, thank you.
So I'd like to make the motion to appoint our two interviewees to the code enforcement board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frampton?
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams. We have a second from Mr. Frampton to accept the, the two applicants to be on the code enforcement.
I point out that the seats are only good until November and then they have to be reappointed at that time.
Yes?
Just so they know.
Yes, you are both aware of that, it's only until November of 2025.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you, motion carries, welcome. Thank you for joining our code enforcement board. Thank you very much. All right, modifications to the agenda, there are none. Public hearings, are there any speaker cards for the public hearings? All right, we'll start off with Kristy, and this is to amend the future land use map to change a future land use designation.
All right, for the record, Kristy Fisher, Planning Director for the City of West Melbourne. And I have a presentation, so give me just one minute to load that up. All right, as it's loading, I wanted to point out that what we're going to do, since the first three agenda items, 5A, 5B, and 5C, all have to do with the same property as we've done in the past, we will do, my staff will do a presentation. And it's from the perspective of looking at our land development regulations and the comprehensive plan, and does the proposal fit in with those two guidebooks, with the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan? So what we've done is gone to the Planning and Zoning Board, remember, they're your local planning advisory board. They've given a recommendation and the applicant is here in the audience with their team. They can certainly answer questions, but what we're going to do is go first through the comprehensive plan amendment, which would allow them to do a townhouse development, then talk about the rezoning, and then the development agreement. The development agreement would be as a draft, and that gives you all the opportunity if you needed to make some changes or ask some questions. And then with a second reading, if you all, you know, make the decisions to approve these projects, then that would be the final development agreement. So that's what we've been doing the last few meetings with you all, and it seems to be a good pattern. So I'll go ahead and do the presentation. At this point in the meeting, I usually turn this over to the city attorney to advise you on quasi judicial matters.
Thank you, members of the council, and as the Planning Director noted, this is a quasi judicial matter. Therefore, you need to make a decision based on evidence on the record, and if you've gone outside of the record to obtain any, any information such as meeting with the applicant or going to view the property or something along those lines, that's not specifically dealing with the packet the staff put together or conversations with staff, you should disclose them at this time. Thank you.
Are there any disclosures? Oh, Ms. McQuire?
I did meet with the applicant and I also went to the site for the purposes of viewing it.
Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a meeting, meeting with Ms. Courtney Baker and she went over the whole development plan with me. And I also received two calls from Mr. Steel on this project. First time we didn't talk much, the second time we talked a little bit about my discussion with Ms. Baker and then that was it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a phone call from Mr. Steel but was not able to answer, so he did send me a text message just asking if I had gotten information on the project. I had responded to him that I did not meet with the applicant at that point. In between then and now, I was able to meet with the applicant, including city staff in that meeting as well, and I also drove by the property to see it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. I did meet with Courtney and also, as we all did, I think, received a call from Jason Steel. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volts.
I did get several text messages from Jason and answered him, and I did also meet with the applicants.
All right, thank you, and I have the same disclosure as the others in that with Ms. Parker, and I've received a phone calls from Mr. Steel. That's it. All right, thank you. Proceed.
The background of this project is that Courtney Barker is a representative for Local Land Company Florida. The property owner is Vulture DLG. The size of the property is sixteen point two-one acres, and in this image, it does not include that little triangular parcel that my police, Ms. Parker is going to talk about a little bit. This is south of the intersection of New Haven and Coastal Lane, so I think most of the audience and council's aware of the Coastal Commerce Center. You may not be aware that that's the name of it, but that's where the Audi and the Goodwill and all those little businesses are, and this is south of that. The property is vacant. It's a wooded lot, it is vacant, and the proposal from the applicant is for 150 units. Fee simple means they would own a little bit of land too. So it's not an apartment complex, so that's the big distinction. And that's what in our definitions for the land development regulations, we call a townhouse, is something that you actually own a little bit of the land. The future land use request is to go from the commercial, so it's commercial future land use, and in order to have residential, because our commercial does not allow residential uses, they would have to change it to, in this case, a medium density residential. On the other hand, with the zoning, it's the same kind of thing that the commercial parkway zoning does not allow residential. They would have to go to the R2 zoning. The property history is that this site, along with the Coastal Commerce properties, were annexed in 2007. So there was a large sixty-four, almost sixty-four acre annexation that occurred at this time, and then the assignment of commercial and commercial parkway was given to all these properties. As you all know, over time, the projects that are, you know, north of this developed, but this property has not developed. It was going to be part of a development, that's why Coastal Lane stops where it is. And like I said, the applicant can fill you in on the details of their timing and their business model.
Excuse me, Kristy, can I, can I ask you a question? The, on your first slide, you said there was 150 units, but on the paperwork it says 162 units.
No, what, what we were saying is that if you did the math, the maximum you can have for density in that future land use designation is 10 dwelling units an acre. So if you took sixteen point two-one acres times 10, that would be the highest limit they could have, is 162 units.
Okay.
What they have been telling us and what we actually put into the development agreement to limit it so that they don't build another 12 units, is 150 units.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. This is a map view of that change for the future land use. As we always say, on the left-hand side, it's the existing designation that's shown in red, for that yellow polygon is two of them, and then on the right side, then you have that brownish orangish color for the MD residential. The analysis of the compatibility is looking at what surrounds the property. So you've got Coastal Commerce to the north, to the south you have a canal, and then the Falcon Ridge subdivision. To the east you have the Coastal Commerce Stormwater Pond, and then you have Keystone Street, and then some residences. And to the west you have I-95 and the FDOT retention pond. So you do have some transitional properties around it, which is, you know, from a planning perspective, a good way of having something that's a little bit more compact and dense, is to have some transition between the commercial and single family. For the comprehensive plan, we have to look at, you know, we talked about the surrounding properties, we have to look at our future land use goals, that's what FLU stands for. We have to look at the maximum infrastructure, and this slide, you know, tells you a little bit about how we do that analysis as staff. The photo was because I wanted to remind everybody that when you get to the end of Coastal Lane, that's what you see, and that's why I say it's, it's a wooded property. In terms of the maximum impacts, this is where, you know, state says to us, okay, so pretend that this is going to be fully built out at sixteen point two-one acres as commercial, what is that yield? You know, what's the square footage, how many trips? What is that for water and sewer? And that's why we do this comparison, and we say, okay, if they build out as commercial, 352,000 square feet, well, that, that's not going to happen. If it hasn't happened since 2007, it probably is not going to happen. But if they do, you know, a maximum of 162 dwelling units, there's fewer trips on the road, there's fewer impacts. So that's what the, the analysis is about. The goals, objectives, and policies, this supports mixed-use nodes to encourage a blend of residential, commercial, and business services, and the medium density residential does provide that transition that we talked about. This is also consistent with the fact that all developers have to, if the water and sewer or other infrastructures near them, they have to bring it on-site. As I say, you know, in every meeting where we have a comprehensive plan map amendment, the state has put in a property rights element, and that means that as staff, as city council, we have to abide by the private property rights element that everybody, you know, gets an opportunity to build to what they have, and you all have the choice of, you know, giving them that other designation they want or not. So switching now to the rezoning, that's why it's labeled as 5B. It's very similar, the CP zoning is on the left in those yellow polygons, and on the right you have that orangey color for the R2, which is a 1-2 and multifamily zoning district. Very similar analysis, so I'm not going to go through that. It is consistent with our land development regulations. And I have a feeling tonight, there's going to be more talk about this than the designations, but 5C is the agenda item that talks about the development agreement and the conceptual master plan. So I think some of you all may have seen this image of how the units are going to be laid out, those are those little slivers of rectangles, and then that blue, which would be part of what Ms. Parker's going to talk about, and the green, I'll let her talk about that. The acreage on this, I'll point out, is different than the acreage for the zoning, and there's a reason. This sixteen point seven-three includes a triangular property that's right next to the FDOT pond that used to have a billboard on it many years ago, doesn't have billboard on it anymore. And since this is a draft, you know, and a development agreement, I wanted you all to, you know, think about the whole property, because that little triangle is not in our city limits yet, so we can't legally do anything about it tonight, because the annexation ordinance for that is going to come either August 4th or the following meeting. So that, that's why this includes it all, we're talking about a draft of a development agreement. It makes sense to talk about all three parcels and not just two.
How big is the triangle?
They have said it's point six-seven acres.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the reason for development agreements is it, it gives the affirmation of what are the uses, what's the density, what type of development, what are the infrastructure improvements they're going to make? In this case, it talks about relocating a canal, the architecture, the landscaping, and any other public features. With the conceptual master plan, they're also asking for some waivers, so I'm not going to read through this list, but that third check marked down, where it says waiver requested R2 lot and structure requirements, those are some of the items that they're asking for, some changes from what our code says. And then, you know, I've told you that they have some other features. If you go down that list, if you looked at the development agreement, we're also trying something different, of trying to encourage a little more transit. There is some transit sort of in the area, doesn't quite stop, I don't believe at Coastal Commerce, but there is some transit in the area. So that, that would be a new thing, but again, Ms. Parker can tell you how far along she's gotten on that. And then for driveways, we don't have like a requirement other than saying a driveway has to be 24 feet wide. They were originally going to have streets, but the, what they call streets don't really function as streets, they function more as driveways, like you would have in an apartment complex. So that's not really a change to the code, it's just sort of a change in the wording. Last but not least, in the Planning and Zoning Board, the city attorney made note that the development agreements are 30 years, and we had 25 years, which is better for the city. The conceptual master plan.
Kristy, one quick question. You talked about the streets and driveways kind of thing. Twenty-four feet is for the width of a street, is it still going to be 24 feet?
It still is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that's the good news. It's not that they're asking for something that's 12-foot wide or not passable, it's just, it really has to be kind of like wordsmithing, because we've got our codes that say a street is always 50 feet in width, and that includes grass, that includes sidewalk, that includes all these other features, plus 24 feet of the road. And this type of development isn't really a subdivision in that sense of a single family. It doesn't have all those other features, because it has to, you know, put everything in, it's able to do what they need to do in that 24 feet, but I'll let Courtney.
But the actual roadway is standard from what every other development has?
Right, yep. If it wasn't standard, they would need to tell us now.
Thank you.
But no. So the conceptual master plan, the, what I wanted to draw your attention to, we, we became aware that there is going to be. that there is going to be a six-foot tall opaque fence along the entire perimeter. And it sort of shows up as a purple line on this drawing. Ms. Barker will talk about how that's a PVC fence. And then there will be one segment of wall. And the wall is shown in yellow on this particular depiction here. So again, she can tell you a little bit more about how that works. They are going to have the same entrance as Coastal Lane, and then they're going to have the driveways in their development. There's not going to be any other street connections, so it's just one way in and one way out. And I believe they've talked to you all about having a gated community. And just a reminder to council and to the audience that gated communities are allowed on a as-case-by-case sort of basis where they come before you with a presentation and they tell you, you know, they've made so many points by doing X, Y, and Z. They're not blocking roads, they're not blocking other businesses. So that there's some things that they still need to do on their side. So that's not ready for this agenda. That will be in the future.
Kristi, on the map there where it says wall, is that backs up to I-95?
No, ma'am. That actually backs up to the property. Let me get to the aerial, perhaps it's easier to see. Okay. It doesn't show it very well here, but can you see the cursor that I'm kind of moving around?
Yes, yes.
That's where a little segment of that wall backs up to. And there's three sets of buildings that are going to have the wall.
Okay.
And then they'll be connected, that wall will be connected to a PVC fence.
Yeah.
But that way, you know, whatever commercial, because there is, remember, you have the Audi dealership, and there actually is a vacant property between Audi and this property. And so what we say in the code is whenever you have residential next to commercial, there has to be a barrier, there has to be a wall or fence or something that you can't see through, an opaque fence.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about this, other than to let you know that, you know, we went back and forth with the applicant about some of these dimensions. They've got a slide presentation, so I'm going to let them tell you about that. With the development agreement, remember that, you know, part of the narrative that they have given us is that the state of Florida has changed some of their stormwater requirements. It's really something that our civil engineer, Cam Stalbus, will deal with. Planning Department doesn't deal with that. But they're anticipating they need more stormwater, and hence this design. They did assure us that they're coordinating with Space Coast Area Transit and the TPO about the microtransit services. For many people, that's a new term. It's an on-demand public transportation service that uses smaller vehicles, and it provides shared rides within a defined zone. So it's not Brevard County-wide. It may just be City of West Melbourne, might be New Haven Avenue. Those details have to be worked out. We've asked them for additional guest parking, and there hasn't been any, you know, pushback on that. One thing that they didn't mention, but I wanted to make clear, is we're starting to see more requests for artificial turf. The state of Florida took the leap of saying that local governments cannot legislate whether there's artificial turf in single-family residences. And so I just think that this is sort of a different community, and it wouldn't be, artificial turf doesn't really percolate. And so when you see all the artificial turf in these big professional venues and stuff, they have a whole stormwater system underneath it. You don't see, but single-family homeowners aren't going to have that. So that's why I just don't think it's ever going to be as good as grass for a single family. Landscaping in open space, we are going to have some buffers. So the code requires 10-foot buffers along the perimeters. In some areas, it's going to be as narrow as three feet, but they're still going to have the trees. They're still going to be required to have that fencing, you know, or the wall for those three buildings, and then the trees that are going to be next to us. So you won't just be looking at the walls from either side, either from, you know, somebody on the outside of the development or if you live in the development.
Kristi, one thing.
Sure.
You mentioned that there's some areas where they want zero feet for perimeter. Was that resolved? Because you had said staff does not recommend granting zero feet of perimeter landscaping along portions.
Yeah. Let me get back to the image and let you know that it's very skinny here where the wall is, but that's the three feet. That's where there's literally only three feet from the backyard, you know, invisible sort of property line if I live in one of those buildings, and kind of where the wall is going to be. But in that three feet, they're still going to have to have trees.
Okay.
So no zero between, no zero feet between the back of that property line and the perimeter of the project.
So it was changed?
It was changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I think Ms. Barker is going to tell you a little bit more about these models. There's a lot of discussion about the front-loaded versus rear-loaded types of units. And front-loaded just means for the typical image that we have of single family where you have a garage on the front of your house. Rear-loaded would be the garage in the back of the house. The development agreement has also looked at for consistency with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations, and it is consistent with that. So I'm not going to read through this slide. But in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Board on July 9th did, like I said, they did their review, and they do have some recommendations. For Agenda Item 5A, they recommend approving the first reading of Ordinance 2025-19. And then for Agenda Item 5B, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approving the first reading of Ordinance 2025-20. And I have one more. And for 5C, they also recommended that you all review the development agreement. So that one, you all don't make a motion on until the next meeting, it's just whatever feedback you have. But if I could have the city attorney's help in reading the titles, please.
Please. Madam Mayor, I will read both Ordinance 2025-19 and 20 for first reading. Ordinance number 2025-19 is an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change the future land use on parcels of land totaling 16.21 plus or minus acres located approximately 1,250 feet south of the intersection of US 192, West New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane, and as more fully described herein, from City of West Melbourne, Commercial to City of West Melbourne Medium Density Residential, providing an effective date. And 2025-20, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning a 16.21 plus or minus acre parcel of land generally located approximately 1,250 feet south of the intersection of US 192, West New Haven Avenue, and Coastal Lane, and as more fully described herein, from City of West Melbourne, Commercial Parkway with ICO interchange commercial overlay to R2, 1, 2, and multiple family dwelling districts, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more question for Kristi.
Please.
If you don't mind.
Yes, please.
You wrote in there, and it might be more of a question for the developer, but you put in there, the applicant will be required to obtain permission to utilize and extend Coastal Lane because it's private. Was that obtained already?
They can tell you about the status of it. I believe the original easement agreement for Coastal Lane included this property, and I think they already have that. But I'll let the applicant address that for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Kristi before we hear from the applicant? All right. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm really excited to be here tonight to present what we think is going to be a beautiful project for the City of West Melbourne. So I'm going to go ahead and try to fill in some of the things that Kristi knew I was going to talk about. But just before I start on the project itself, about us, we are, Local Land Co. Florida is a full-service developer-builder company. So we do it all. We buy raw land like this, develop it, do all the site work, build all the residential units, all of the amenities centers, everything about the project. And we also buy finished lots from other developers. Sometimes we buy projects that are already rezoned from other landowners. So we do everything. We operate in the Carolinas, Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, and Florida. Our corporate office is in Atlanta, Georgia, and our Florida office is in Lake Nona. And we pride ourselves on excellence in architectural standards, beautiful landscaping, and superior site work and development. And our president of our company is an architect, so a lot of our models are pretty well received by most cities that, in local governments that we work in. We typically, when there's architectural standards, we never really have to change our models because they already meet most architectural standards of any community. We are new to the Space Coast. We're the, this is, if this project is approved, it'll be our second project in Brevard County. We very much believe in this area. Our first project is in North Red Island Villas, and, in North Red Island, and it's called North Island Villa, sorry. A 48-unit townhome project intended on capturing the housing needs for Space Center employees. And amenities for this project include a pool and cabana. You obviously know where the proposed project is. There is a lot of confusion on the acreage because the property appraiser sometimes doesn't have exact acreage on their property appraiser site. So we need, what matters is the acreage in the survey that we did. And we did a survey as recently as March of this year. I have it here if any of you are interested in it. But it's a full ALTA survey. It shows all the easements that apply to the property, everything. ALTA survey is basically whatever a developer does for any property they're buying to make sure that we know exactly what encumbrances are on the property, whether there's FPL easements, DOT easements, all the access easements, making sure that we have full access to the property and so on. And we do have access through Coastal Lane to the project. But the project, total project site with all three parcels, there's three parcels, and I'll show that to you in a minute, is 16.8 acres. It's south of 192. And obviously, we have, you know, like Kristi said, a pretty good transition between commercial and the single family that's surrounding, surrounding us. We also have the pond to the left, or to the west, I'm sorry, and then another, you know, linear drainage pond to the east. These are the three parcels that were under contract to purchase. The property on the, in the orange to the west is parcel one, the long purple property is parcel two, and the little triangle piece is parcel three. The intended development is proposed only to be on parcels one and two, so we are not developing parcel three. We will be annexing it into the city, and we are only doing that sole, for the sole purpose of tree mitigation. So we can use that towards tree mitigation for the whole project. But we are not intending to develop the project. This currently in use designation is commercial, zoning is commercial Parkway. And we really consider this a smaller infill site. And this is the type of site my company likes or prefers. We typically like smaller developments that are within cities, that are within urban areas that our residents have commercial service accesses, like very close. We don't really like to go out in the middle of nowhere. We like to be close to the urban core, and that's, that's why we think this is a great project. It's very convenient to 95, really convenient to the commercial services surrounding the area, and very, very convenient to the local workforce areas. So airport, Melbourne Airport, the, you know, all of the industrial parks surrounding this, in this area. Very convenient. So the, we don't believe this property is very, is very suitable for commercial. It's been on the market for a very long time. It's kind of an L shape, shape, which makes it odd for a commercial project. And it's also set back really far from the road. So very difficult to see. So if it was ever developed for a commercial, it would most likely be for like a car dealership or something like that. And that triangle piece that's on the bottom, like, and I have designed, I can't tell you how many commercial projects in my lifetime, and I will tell you that if I was designing a commercial project for this site, I would put the pole sign right there in the triangle piece. And that's, and it would be very tall, so everybody could see it from 95, and that's how I'd advertise the project or the property and the business. So I think that leaving that alone or doing a smaller type sign would be much more, would be much better for the people who live right next to it. So that's, and I'll talk about that in a couple minutes. So the site is very heavily wooded. We had a hard time, our consulting teams had a really hard time getting out there to do full-blown surveys. There are some remnants and some active homeless camps back there. So we, if we were to get approval, we would likely have to do a brush clearing permit so we can get back there and do an accurate tree survey and accurate gopher tortoise, you know, survey and all that. But right now, it's very difficult to get it through the site. We did not notice any gopher tortoise activity on the site. In fact, a heavily wooded site like this is not very conducive to gopher tortoise habitat, but we will still do 100% survey just to make sure. The last thing we like as builders is walking into a surprise, so we want to cover all our bases. So we are intending to build a 150-unit townhome project at a density of 8.9 dwelling units an acre. We would like to build a mix of rear-loaded and front-loaded. Rear-loaded, like Kristi, you talked about, basically the garages are in the back. So the garages will be facing a 30-foot alley, and that's the right, I guess you could call the road width. And then I have a 24 drive, just like a normal road. But we consider those alleys and the front doors, basically, of the homes will be facing each other with a sidewalk running in between it. We call that area a muse. That's what we call it. Some people call it a courtyard, some people call it the front yards, but we call it a muse. We just think that that type of mix, having the rear-loaded and front-loaded, gives the people who are moving into, who are looking at this project a choice. And you'll see the differences in the models in a minute. So sometimes looking at engineering plans, you can't really see the amount of green space that's on the plan. So we like to do a green plan, just so you can see the green. The, we really tried to use the wet ponds as a buffer from 95 for our residents, and then also a buffer between our project and the project that's to the south of us, that's already there. So we're trying to be cognizant of our neighbors and trying to insulate our development from everybody else and insulate any impacts. Melbourne Tilman Canal. So we all know about the canal that runs through the middle of this project. So interestingly, when we did the survey, we noticed that a portion of the canal is actually on the Fulcher property. So when we met with, we had several conversations with Melbourne Tilman staff, not the board, the staff, there's a big difference. They were favorable in letting us move, or them move, the ditch to where it's supposed to be. And then us piping a portion of the ditch and possibly vacating that area or at least getting a driveway permit for our road. So that, I believe we are perfectly set up to get that done pretty quickly. The area in the blue is the area that we will pipe the ditch, and the area in the green is the area that will move their ditch to where it's supposed to be. So either way, you'll see grass and landscaping in there. You won't be able to really tell the difference, to be honest. And, you know, that's what we'll get a permit for. So we, the, we would like to do 20-foot wide townhomes for the entire project. The, your development, your land development code does not address the rear-loaded townhomes. It also allows you to go from 24 to less than 24-foot width, but you have to meet certain standards. And we're meeting the energy efficiency, water efficiency standards. The one thing that we would request not to have to meet is the balcony standard for the second floor. Because we did try to look at satisfying that code, it just looked to us like apartments. Like, it looked like a line of apartments, basically. And we're trying to make, really look like a real townhome. So we would like to do things like shutters and other things to make it more architecturally appealing, but lose balcony idea. We even tried to do like, instead of the sliding glass door, balconies, like just a single, you know, French door to go in, and it still looked a little ridiculous. So we would prefer to do the nice, you know, shutters above the windows and all that.
Can I jump in here a second? Kristi, what, what's the purpose in the code for the balconies and?
It's to provide some architectural distinction because in our mind, what happens with a lot of developers is they just want to have a window, and they don't even put a casement or trim around it. And it's, there's something in the planning world where you want to break up a building mass. So whenever you have 100 feet of building length, you usually want to give it some distinction because it makes it more appealing to the human eye. And so that's what the balconies do. You try to have something protrude three feet or more to give that visual interest. But if they're willing to do other things to accomplish it.
That was going to be my next question.
That's fine.
Are you kind of satisfied with the shutters and the other architectural changes there?
Yeah. We think that'll work. I've, over the years, so we, I think we put that into the code like in 2010. Every single developer has fought us about having balconies. And some of it has been for kind of risk reduction types of things that they don't really want to have balconies. And some of it has been for kind of risk reduction types of things that they don't really want to have balconies because they'll cause risks, you know, for their tenants or, you know, and, and you're thinking, like I would probably, of people going out there. But they're saying that those really.
My kids jumping off.
Right, well, they, those really deteriorate over time. And I wasn't aware of that, you know, that a lot of times, things will be falling from the bottom of them to the bottom tenant. So that's the feedback that I've gotten about balconies.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
We just thought they looked silly. We thought it looked better to, to do the shutters and just make it look, you know, more appealing to the eye, more aesthetically appealing. But we also, so because we were wanting to do the twenty-foot wa, width, we, it, it basically affects the lot sizes and the depth and everything else. So we're, all those have to be adjusted accordingly. So it looks like there's a long list of waivers, but it's really because we just want to do twenty-foot width townhomes. We're also proposing, we, we also have to, we're, we're designing this, and what you see right now is designed to comply with the new stormwater standards that are coming into effect at the end of the year, which requires additional treatment train and additional treatment for the loads for the, for the stormwater projects or stormwater portions of the project. So we're, we're meeting about twenty, we're basically using about twenty-seven percent of our site for stormwater at this point. Only twenty-two percent of the site is covered by buildings. So if that kind of gives you some perspective of how much stormwater really does take of a property. So the, the laws have changed twice in the last five years, and, and each time they get a little bit more stringent. So we're hoping to, to, we're accommodating that by kind of, you know, reducing the right-of-way width and things like that so we can get the space that we need for stormwater. Walking trails, we're putting walking trails in the perimeter buffers. And we're also putting sidewalks along the main forty-foot driveway, or dry path, roadway. The thirty-foot, these are alleys, and they're solely functional for people to park it to their garage. So we typically don't do sidewalks there because the most people, if they want to go on a walk, walk out the front door, which has a sidewalk. So these are, this is the list of requested waivers. So the lot depth, we're looking for a hundred foot for front-loaded and ninety-eight point five feet for rear-loaded. The twenty-foot width, and then because of that, we're looking for a minimum lot area of nineteen hundred seventy square feet. And then the driveways for the forty-foot main drive and thirty-foot alleys. We're still meeting the twenty-four foot width of the driveway. So very similar to any, you, you wouldn't even notice. We're, we're finding now, and I encountered this a lot when I was city manager and planning director, when you're doing a small residential development, a fifty-foot right-of-way is just totally unnecessary. Usually, we, if it was being dedicated to the city, I would request the fifty-foot because we typically have to upgrade stormwater and stuff like that over time, and we need to have space for bigger pipes and all kinds of stuff. So if it, but these are going to be private roads. So there's just no reason for that much space to be dedicated for roadway. Perimeter landscaping, we are meeting the ten foot around most of the project. There's just two areas that we're not, and we, and we agreed to the three foot. And then to the area to the north where we're headed, the three, we are agreeing to mitigate that with the wall. So this is some of the enhancements in the developer's agreement and mitigation of the waivers. So we are doing pavers for the front-loaded townhomes. And that's to find, you know, when you're going down the road, that big long road, it, there's some visual interest there. We are doing entranceway pavers, and Christie specifically said no stamped concrete, so take, ignore that section. We're doing a gated entrance, so provided that we meet the LDR requirements, because there is a process, I've, I've been told, and I looked it up, and there is a big process for that. So we'll, we'll go through engineering, and if we can do it, we'll do it. So I, I really do think we can. And we have committed to providing a larger diameter perimeter tree so that an opaque vegetative screen is achieved within a year of certificate of occupancy. So we will work with our landscape designer to come up with the type of tree and the diameter they think that we need to install from the beginning to get that growth. We will have to do a drip line back there to irrigate the trees to make sure that they actually grow. And we don't have to replace anything over time. I mean, we're going to have to replace one or two, but. We have architectural standards for window treatments, varying roof lines, siding variations, and color variations to provide an anti-monotonous viewpoint throughout the development. And when we are going, I gave Christie the models that we were going to use, and I said, well, could we, you know, attach that as exhibits? And she said, well, we need to put in standards here because even though I've known Christie for twenty-five years, she was like, no, just because Courtney said you're going to do it, doesn't mean that we have to have some guidelines here. So those are very laid out in the developer's agreement, exactly what we have to do. And we have no problem with that, and it includes textured garages as well. So we agreed to that, too. And then, you know, of course, the six-foot-high precast concrete wall behind buildings A, B, and C. And that is the location of that wall. So we'll be transitioning, we're going to have aluminum fencing in the front by the gate, so it kind of matches the gate, so people can see coming in. Usually, police departments like that because they like to be able to see the community when they're driving by. And, and we like people to be able to see when, when they're coming in, what they're coming into. And then we'll transition to the wall. And then after we get past those buildings, PVC fence around the remainder of the community. This is our proposed rear-loaded alley townhomes. So you, you could see no garage in the front, the front, the garages are in the back. These are bigger homes because they, they're just bigger models. So these, even though they're twenty feet, they're seventeen hundred square feet, although, you know, down to, all the way up to seventeen hundred thirty-eight square feet. So they're really cute. You know, we try to use paint colors to differentiate the, the units. And also the, even the buildings, sometimes we use like a palette for one building and then another palette for another building and so on. So you, you get that mix throughout. And I got a lot of questions about the Benton and Jernigan because the models I was using was from Georgia. So we got a picture of the models that we used in another Florida project, just so you can actually see what they look like with the finishes that we would use. There's two important differences here between what we agreed to with the city of West Melbourne. And this project is, and that will have paved driveways. And then we'll also have textured garages as well. And that's all I got for you. And real quick, the, for the transit issue. So I think, you know, Christie was trying to get, you know, come up with ideas that she thought you guys would like. So, but also something that she knew I could probably do because I, you know, I'm a city manager. So in Satellite Beach when I was city manager, we applied for and got a Volunteers in Motion van. That's all volunteer, and it's all organized through SCAT. They might have a problem doing that in a gated community, so they might prefer to park the van at City Hall because it's available to usually the population of the city that they're serving. Or I could do a ride share if they, if they don't see an opportunity there. So I can do either one, and we'll be committed to that as well. So we're still, I'm still going back and forth with, you know, SCAT right now to see if they, you know, because basically, they write the grant for you, they get the van, they organize all the volunteers, so they're trying to make sure that those grant funds are still available.
And then Courtney, I see that you've got some letters, I think, from Melbourne Tilman. Is that something you wanted to share with council? Megan, she's got a document.
I think there was, you know, maybe some like, Courtney says that they talked to Melbourne Tilman, did they really? You know, so this letter is actually to the property owner because we don't own the property yet, we're, we're, we have it under contract. But they have agreed to work with us on the canal itself. So once we get engineering plans a little bit more solidified for that and make sure we understand, you know, what size pipe they want and all that stuff, we will turn that into Melbourne Tilman, go through their process, and go to the board. If they do not want us to vacate, if the board doesn't want us to vacate that area, sometimes they say no, you know, maybe they want to retain the area, then we'll get a driveway permit, and honestly, it'll be exactly, it'll look exactly alike, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Frambus.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. Permission for the roadway, I'm guessing you got that already?
Yeah.
Right, so. Street lighting, what are you going to do as far as the street lighting goes?
We haven't gotten that far in engineering yet, so whatever the city staff requires us.
I don't believe the city requires any street lighting, but most communities.
We don't, we don't have a requirement.
Do put in street lighting, and I was curious of what you guys did.
I would have to get back with you on that. I, I'm not sure what the, what home building wants to put in, depends on how dark that area is.
Dark.
Yeah, and sometimes it depends on what lights we have on the front of the homes, too. So, you know, typically.
People tend not to leave their lights on. It's, it's, I don't understand it, but. Are the walking trails included in the development agreement?
No, but they're on the plan, the concept plan.
So we, we had a problem with another development where they were on the plan, but they weren't really mandatory, and then they took them away, so.
That's a good point. I mean, there could be a statement added to the development agreement, I'm looking at the city attorney, that specifies that all of the amenities that are shown on the concept plan shall be built. I mean, it would be a simple sentence like that.
I would love to see that.
Yeah, this, this is our opportunity to negotiate the development agreement. It's, this isn't the final one that we're going to be passing, that'll be at the next meeting. So any changes that we have, we can certainly work into the agreement and we will take.
Down as a change. When we met, we talked about the, my dislike for dead-end roads and the trash trucks and stuff, being able to have a spot to turn around. You talked about maybe checking into the T-turns or small turnaround areas. What'd you find out?
So we would have to eat the, into the buffer area already. So I would prefer to wait for engineering to tell me if they, they would require that.
But you're asking for approval now, so how are we going to?
Because right now, we're meeting your block length to not have any turnaround whatsoever. So that block length meets those standards.
Our standards and the fire department's. So it, it meets both of ours.
I worry about the trash trucks having to back up and having a community like this with children and stuff. And I just have concerns there, that's all. I know we talked about it before with other developments.
We have, we've talked about it. Just so that you all remember, in some of the other developments, we actually let that be kind of like a stabilized surface, which is another way of saying like a rock bed, instead of, you know, actually being something that's paved. So remember that every drop of pavement you put on to a piece of land, you've got to keep the rainwater that comes off of that. And so that's the, the balance that I believe that Courtney is talking about trying to do, so.
Well, it's also space. I mean, it's, we have the ten-foot buffer, which I assumed you want trees there. So, you know, a portion of that would have to go. In fact, it would have to be wide enough for.
I understand, and we talked about it, you said.
Get rid of your trees at all, you know, the whole thing.
And if, if we put that in, we'd have to do away with the walking trail. So, you know, so it's six, one half, it has another, I guess, city satisfied with the distance for these vehicles to back up?
Yes, it does meet, like you said, the land development regulations, and then it does meet the fire department's requirements. So, you know, it, it's okay on both fronts. Like I said, the only thing that I can think of would be to maybe add a stabilized surface on the west side. Not so much eating into the perimeter buffer, but where it has that label for dry pond. Maybe at that area, kind of creating a little bit of tea.
That's the green, or where, where are you at?
It, it's not the green. So to the right of the green, there's like a little label. I, I know it's hard to see, maybe Courtney, you can go back to that slide.
Okay, now I see it.
Well, one thing, maybe I can suggest some language. We could just say, you know, in areas that we can fit one safely, we'll put it in. But that would have to be, we had to really go through engineering for that, to be honest.
Sure, okay. If, if we're, if the city's good on the, the distance that the waste management's going to have to back up and stuff in there, I'm, who am I? And just to be clear, this is not live local, correct?
No.
That's part of the agreement as well.
Right, and even though you say affordable housing, it's not low-income housing. So it's affordable in the sense that new home buyers and, and retirees who are looking to downsize, it's affordable housing for them, right? That's what, how we're looking at that.
Sometimes attainable housing, entry-level housing.
People, people just are narrow-sighted sometimes on, when, when you hear the word affordable housing. I, I just, it's, it's, my mother used to sell townhomes, and, and it was very popular in, back in the eighties, and then went away. So now I, I see it as a good thing, so I have no more questions for you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Frambus, Ms. McGuire.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think it already got mentioned, but just to clarify, you are ideally looking for this to be a for-sale, not a for-rent community? Okay. And then the sidewalk, I know it got mentioned, the sidewalks in the community, but are those sidewalks connecting out to the sidewalk on coastal?
So we'll, we will meet Coastal Lane. And if we can get it on the other side of Coastal Lane, we'd have to get that landowner's permission and make sure that there's enough right-of-way. We'll put that on both sides. But one thing I did want to quickly add, and which I totally forgot, and I just now figured that out. The triangle piece, this is a council decision. So we agreed in the developer's agreement to put it under a conservation easement. And the concern there was, you know, let's say in five years, a cell tower company comes and approaches the HOA and says, we want to put a cell tower there. And the HOA goes, ooh, forty grand a year. We don't want that to happen. So we'll put it in a conservation easement in perpetuity. Or we can dedicate that parcel to the city if the city wants a welcome-to-West Melbourne entrance sign. Okay? And if you want that, we can build it for you and pay up to fifty thousand or fifty percent of the cost of the sign or whatever's less. This is, signs are about a hundred thousand dollars, so just, but that's up to you all. You guys decide what you want to do. So either way.
And then, I know it's been talked about, but this will or will not be gated?
So.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been universally asked to be gated. We weren't intending at first to gate it. I can see the reasoning behind the desire to gate it, so we're fine with that. We just need to meet, meet your standards. So we'll, we'll figure that out during engineering, but it's, it's worded that way. If we can meet those standards, we'll put in the gate.
Okay, and then since it's gated, I assume it's the traditional, like homeowners association style? That's all my questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I, I just wanted to say thanks for your time, taking the time to sit down with the individual council members and, and Mr., our city manager. It was really helpful for me to, when you, sometimes when you've got to look at all these documents, it's nice to get a picture painted before you kind of delve into it. And, you know, I know we discussed, normally, we're not easy to give up on our requirements in West Melbourne. And, and I think that's for a good reason. But the discussions on making it into a gated community, I know it cost you guys on the order of a hundred K or so. And, and then you had a brick street at near the entrance or something to, to, other than just a plain street. Taking over the canal responsibility, I think you guys have to maintain that.
That's what they initially told our engineer. I am going to have a conversation with them about that because I, you know, Melbourne Tilman runs like any local government's stormwater utility, you know? And I can say as a city manager, the last thing I would want is an HOA to maintain one of my pipes.
Okay. And, you know, to increase the tree size, because I, I really worried about the noise along the interstate there, so I appreciate you guys doing that. Then I think you switched part of it, as, as you said, to, I won't say a concrete cast wall, but other than a PVC, you know, for a portion of it anyway. So I think anything you can do for noise abatement's a good thing. I tried to get the, the pool size made bigger, but I think we ended up where, where you were. So, you know, you gotta, you gotta keep trying for stuff. But I think you guys also increased the guest parking from, from what you'd originally said. And we discussed putting in walking paths. And just following the development agreement process rather than other processes, some other city issues. I, I just appreciate the time that you put into this and that you thoroughly, I think, went over everything with the individual council members and working with Christie to get, I think, good ads to some of the asks that you were having, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Would you not have seen my light on?
I do see your, your light.
My light was on before hers and before some of the others.
Would you like to speak next?
Excuse me. Ms. Adams, would you like to see the floor, too?
I, I see the floor, didn't miss faults.
No, I was just wondering because you didn't call, so.
I, I didn't, I honestly didn't see it.
Let's go.
I didn't see it. It's my bad, I didn't see it.
Go ahead.
Would you like to speak, please? Please speak.
Better turn the mic on. In the design, the houses, you said they're 20 feet wide, um, which to me seems really super small. I don't know how long they are, um, but I was wondering if you have a development with these same dimensions elsewhere that you had no problem selling?
Oh, yes. So, the last photo here. The project that we did in Tampa area, Tampa market, uh, we had no problem selling this project.
And it's the same exact?
Same exact models.
Okay. Okay.
So, the front-loaded are four, in the 1,400 square feet. Just for perspective, I live in Satellite Beach. My home in Satellite Beach, the first one I bought, was a 1,500-square-foot house. So, for a townhome, these are pretty sizable.
Yeah.
And then the alley-loaded are much bigger. They also have two-car garages. So, the alley-loaded with the, with the garage in the, in the back are in the 1,700-square-foot size range, and there's two-car garage in these townhomes.
So, the front-loaded is only one-car garage, and the back-loaded is two. That's interesting. Okay, then.
Garage is when it's in the back, because you don't have a front door taking up space.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I had.
Ms. Adams, your turn now, I promise.
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo Mr. Bentley's statements. I think, Ms. Barker, you came prepared to the meetings that you had with individual council members. I know you addressed a lot of my questions and concerns in terms of looking at it from the lens of not only, you know, from an outside perspective, wanting it to look something that we would want to have in West Melbourne, but also from a, you know, resident perspective, is that something where West Melbourne residents would say, "I would want to be there in terms of my quality of life and what's available to me." So, I appreciate that. I appreciate taking the time to address all the questions and try to fit in things in terms of ideas that we could squeeze into the project. Most of my questions at this point have been addressed by other council members, which is always great. In terms of the side that's on Falcon Ridge, and I don't know if you want to flip to the map that shows that neighborhood on that south-end side, we don't currently have, yep, we don't currently have a thicker wall on that south end, knowing that there's a neighborhood on the other side of that piece. Is that a concern in terms of resident feedback? Christie, have we heard from any residents, knowing that it could be that close?
We haven't heard from any residents, so we did the mail-out, as we always do for these cases, in a 500-foot radius, and we didn't hear from any residents in Falcon Ridge. I didn't hear from any of the residents along Keystone or Miami. There is a canal, and Courtney, I don't know if you know the dimensions of it. I'm looking here at your concept plan, and it says 44 feet. So, I, I would assume that's the, the right-of-way area. It, it's, it's not as big as like 100 feet, but 44 feet is double, almost double what you would have for a rear yard setback, which is 25 feet. So, that, that's why I, I didn't put a lot of emphasis. And then we have the land mass of that wet pond that she has drawn there. Courtney, if you know what the dimension is of that, sometimes land acts as just as good a buffer as having walls and trees.
Do we know the tree preservation density, looking at where the wet pond is going to be south, all the way to that canal?
Tree preservation density?
I don't think they're gonna be preserving any trees on this site.
None in that area, okay.
Not on the site, to be honest. We're bringing, we have to bring in four feet of fill because of where the water table is here. So, that's why we readily agreed to doing bigger diameter trees and all that, because no tree's gonna survive with four feet of fill. They'll all die.
And they're required to do the bigger trees, but what Courtney is suggesting is going even bigger. So, what the, the requirement is, is a three-inch caliper tree, and they're gonna go slightly bigger than that. The other thing is that Courtney keeps mentioning the conservation easement in that triangular property, and that's where they're gonna get some of their tree preservation credits from, is from saving trees there.
Yeah, so we're also doing, we committed to that buffer being opaque by the, for, within a year of the CO, but we also are doing the PVC fence too. So, you have the pond, these ponds dividing the communities, PVC fence, 10-foot buffers with all the trees, so.
I can't speak for the rest of council, but I'd prefer, I think, to see it stay as a conservation easement. I don't necessarily see the point of putting a, a West Melbourne sign there. I think we've got those elsewhere throughout the city, and we've only got so many parcels of land left that are undeveloped, but that just, that is just my personal opinion. In terms of the townhomes themselves, are any of them ADA accessible?
So, we can make them ADA accessible, depending on the owner. So, if they request that, we can, we can do that build. But we are, we are production builders, but we can make those improvements to them. So, we have an entire arm of our company that can do that.
Would that cost then be passed on to the resident interested in purchasing? And do you know what that ballpark might be?
No, but they're, they're pretty simple improvements. It's just, these are two-story townhomes, so we don't really get a lot of people that need accommodations wanting these types of units, to be honest. They typically will go for a one-story, because otherwise they have to put the, the lift on the stairs.
Understood.
That can be, you know, kind of, especially, these, all of these units have one straight stairwell, so it's possible, but when there's a, you know, stairwell that goes like this, it's very difficult to do.
In terms of the proposed mobility option, I think you had mentioned we, they'd be kind of searching for the, uh, grant funds for that, is that correct?
For the volunteers in motion side of it, yeah.
So, what happens if that grant is not available?
So, then we would probably, we would have to create like a ride-share program for the, for the residents at this location.
And is that something we have to put in the development agreement, rather than just this may happen?
It's in there, yeah.
As a backup plan if the grant is not available?
We did, but we can take a look at that wording if you'd like to make sure that there, it's clear that, you know, either they're gonna do the microtransit or they're gonna do the, the ride-share.
We, you know, we'll do either or.
Thank you.
Mr. Frantis?
As far as the, the fencing to the south end of the property, that, Christie, that's not a requirement anyhow, if it's going from residential to residential, right?
Right, that, that's not a code requirement.
The only reason they're doing the wall bef, on the top part is because it's commercial to residential, correct?
That's right, and then on the west, it's because of I-95.
Right.
You know, the buffering.
But the fence is going around the whole entire property regardless.
Yes.
We just wanted to do that, just, you know, you know, it's just an extra shield for the people who, you know, just to the south of us.
And as far as the Melbourne Tillman ditch, Mr. Rhodey, I, I know when we were looking at piping water down a canal, um, it was brought up back then that it was more efficient sometimes to pipe the water with the canal rather than have the canal there itself, correct?
Yeah, it can be. I mean, the developer's gonna have to work with the Tillman district and the engineering to make sure it works. The, the one reason why, why I think piping, why the district would be open to piping that, that section is this is kind of the start of that canal. It might be more difficult if it was further along in the canal chain. You might have to get such a large diameter pipe that it might be counterproductive.
It might also resolve the problem where it's not even on their property currently, right?
Well, that, that's, that's an interesting issue. I won't say that's the first time that, that, that has happened with the Tillman district, but, um, that's an interesting one that they're, that the Tillman canal is in the wrong spot.
I just wanted to bring up that we're not really losing anything by piping the water under there and.
No, and.
Having it that way.
Tillman's passion is moving stormwater, and so they are very aggressive on making sure the requirements are met.
And as for the property, the little triangle, um, I know we had a long discussion about that today, and there were some last-minute talks about the property and all, about West Melbourne taking over the, the triangular piece of property. Can you talk a little bit about the benefits there and?
Yeah, I, I think conceptually tonight, what we wanted to, to get some feedback from the council on relative to that item, and, and I don't know if you're able to go to a different slide that has the triangle in there. The developer has indicated that the triangle isn't going to be part of their project, which makes a lot of sense. I don't know how you would build townhomes across the canal and in the back of kind of no man's land there. So, the idea came up that, that because that's the turn and the, um, you're just getting to the exit ramp for 192, which is our, our, one of our main interchange exits for West Melbourne, that the possibility of a West Melbourne, you know, kind of a "Welcome to West Melbourne" sign, if you will, uh, that would be an ideal location. And we reached out to developer, had a discussion about that. Either way, I think it's in the city's best interest, um, once this develop, if this development is approved, once the process is underway, that the city does retain that over having the HO, HOA with that, only from the standpoint of items that have already been mentioned this evening. At some point, somebody's gonna look at that site as, what can they do there? And if the city, uh, as part of this agreement retains that, it could stay trees for 50 years, or we could do something with it, but, but at least this council, um, through a public process, would be involved in that discussion of what happens in the future, as opposed to, um, what typically happens, because with, as, as staff has discovered here over the last couple of years, uh, we are almost the last to find out when a cell tower's going up, uh, because they do not need to get, uh, city approval. They need to follow our rules during construction, but they don't, as, as this city council knows, we've never had a cell tower come in front of this body for a year or a year. And so, I think, uh, because the, because the development doesn't need it, it's also probably not the best thing to stick to an HOA in the future, as many of you are, uh, involved in your HOAs, and these deals get done long before you move in and, and reside there, and 20 years goes by, this will obviously just be something that'll be hanging out there for the HOA to deal with. That's probably not in the best position to deal with it, whereas we would be in a better position. And again, maybe it just sits for years and, and nothing happens, or maybe we want to do something in the future with some more, um, recognition for West Melbourne that you're, that you're now in West Melbourne, so.
And when we talked about the sign, we weren't talking about taking up a large portion of the wooded lot, just kind of on, on the edges and maybe a, a narrow footprint, sort of like the, uh, Vieira sign, the, the skinny Vieira sign they have up there, or something?
Yep, I, I think those examples are really good. It wouldn't be like your, um, I'm trying to think of the company that owns all the freeway signs. It wouldn't be, uh, Lamar, yeah. It wouldn't be one of those, you know.
Digital billboards.
Big concrete pole with a big.
60-foot tall.
Yeah, it, we, we wouldn't be talking about something like that. We'd be talking more similar to the Vieira, or, or if you're heading south, um, as you get, um, into some of the communities further south that are escaping me, uh, they have more recognition signs, you know, which is city logo and the city name kind of thing.
So, um, is it possible, I guess this might be for the city attorney to, if we decide not to put the sign in there to reallocate the 50,000 towards, uh, a different project?
That would be part of the negotiation. The development agreement is a negotiation between the developer and the city, and so, um, if that.
Agreeing to the 50,000 cap on that, uh, would you agree to, if we decide not to do that, utilizing the money for a different portion of a city project, maybe in your name or however you want to say? Is that, is that agreeable? Either, either way, it's, either way, it's $50,000, right? So.
Yeah, so you, you want us to just dedicate the property then?
Dedicate the property and, and, and allocate the, like you said, the 50,000 towards the, uh, towards the sign?
Okay.
That's what we talked about earlier today.
Payable, um, at impact fee payment? And, and the reason why, because that would be, that's how I would charge it to my development, is an impact fee?
Right, that, that is kind of what we talked about.
Yeah, we, we can talk about some timing and some logistics, but, you know, is that something agreeable to the council, or is?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Just need to know that we're.
I guess we're not gonna be able to rent the sign out to Buc-E's, and, so, okay.
Are you trying to keep the Buc-E's rumor? Are you trying to keep the Buc-E's rumor alive forever?
I'm fine with that. 200 miles to Buc-E's, we could rent that sign out.
I just didn't want to lose the money if we're not doing the sign, if we choose not to do the sign. I'd like to, I don't know, to put it towards something else.
City attorney, we, we would need some language. If you do choose to do the sign, uh, we need something that, to, for us to.
Offset the impact fees.
Easement to them, so they can get to the property.
So, you're, so that who can get to the property?
You guys.
Okay.
Through our development.
A dedication kind of statement.
I think there's access through the Melbourne Tillman, uh, utility road, right?
Yeah, the canal district has a, a service road that runs on the south side of the canal.
I just wanted to make sure that if you do choose to do the sign, that you could get to it.
Yeah, and, and we can verify, uh, access and.
Okay, we move on. Mr. Bentley, followed by Ms. Volz.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I did have something on my list, but Steve had mentioned it, but I'm not sure I was completely satisfied with the answer or the guarantee there, and that's on the streetlights. I, I want to ensure there's some kind, if it's not streetlights, there's some kind of lighting, uh, because that's a dark area, and so I, I don't know, Christie, what you can work out, but I want that a little more nailed down to, and we're gonna check into it.
Okay, so you want a statement in the development agreement?
I want some lighting. I was thinking, well, we could put it on the buildings, but I forgot they're individually owned, so.
They are.
We can't do that.
No, you can't.
Pat, can I give you an example in mind?
Absolutely.
Well, when D.R. Horton did our development, they put street lighting on the first half of Shallow Creek, and then, then they didn't put street lighting on the second half of Shallow Creek, and it was up to the HOA to contract with FPL to come back and do it later. That's why I kind of mentioned it, and, and if they're gonna do it, we need to lock it in through the development agreement and stuff, so it's, so it gets done and it.
I'm, I'm with you. That's why I want to put in writing somewhere that, that's at least my expectation, because we're voting tonight.
Can I ask the applicant something for clarification? So, the build of this project, is it all of the buildings being built simultaneously? Or is it gonna be phased? Because I'm not opposed to the lighting coming in phase, because you certainly don't want, like, if they're not building the west portion yet, you don't need streetlights there until they actually have buildings, so that's the question.
That's typically, we'll do sections at a time, but, but we would normally do the site work first, but we put in streetlights last, to be honest. Home building comes in and destroys everything.
Yes, the big trucks, the big.
No, FPL wanted the infrastructure there prior to putting in the lights and.
They just need the transmission boxes, that's all that FPL needs.
I'll put the, the, um, tabling and all that in, but, during site work, but we're not actually gonna put the streetlights in until, like, after the houses are built. But I just don't want to specify the amount yet until we do the lighting study and all that.
So, so just, uh, you know, there seems to be consensus that, from the council on the lighting issue, and then the developer seems to be amenable to, to some lighting issue, so why don't, why don't we let staff, you know, we have, this is a good, you know, we've got a couple of weeks here yet, um, why don't we take a, take a run at that and try to, you know, we, we, we understand what the council's saying, and to the developer, you know, they don't have construct, you know, they don't spend all the money on the construction drawings for this phase, right? So, it's kind of hard to, to ask for those, that level of detail, you know, when they don't know if they have a project or not, and so let us wordsmith some, some language that, that I think can achieve that.
Thank you. Ms. Volz?
Again, Steve, did you, and, I don't know, you were talking about the fence, did you say fence all the way around?
That's correct.
The vinyl PVC fence goes all the way around, except for the concrete wall that they're gonna put in.
Right, so there will, that south part, that there's a canal, there's going to be a fence. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I have a few questions as well. So, all right, so I'm gonna take streetlights off my list. So, the, um, these are individual, individually owned, so these are going to be individual trash cans. Everyone's going to have their own, it's not community trash. And so, the people with the one-car garage, are they're going to have to keep their trash carts in the, in that garage? Is there going to be any lawn maintenance, or is the lawn maintenance going to be included? Or will they have lawnmowers?
We do all the lawn maintenance in our.
So, there'll be no individual fences on any of these little teeny lots and no lawnmowers?
We'll have backyard fences.
The back ones, all right, so will they be, will there be any yard debris? Will they need the big brown lid, Bertha Brown lid, um, trash carts?
We do every, the, the HOA handles everything. When you do lots this small, the HOA handles all the yard maintenance, all of the pruning, everything. HOA does it all.
Okay, all right, so they'll.
That's part of the attraction of moving into a community like this, is you. That's part of the attraction of moving into a community like this, is you don't have to maintain your lawn anymore, which is why I moved to an HOA.
All right, thank you. Street parking in the back where the alleyways are, will there be any street parking? And it'll be posted, no parking at any time, and, all right.
Yes, so like in, in some of our communities, especially when you have the 40-foot width, you can, we can allow street parking, but only on one side of the road. So that's, could be part of the HOA. Typically, we just prefer not to allow street parking at all. So when we, if we can get that right-of-way vacated, we'll put guest parking there, and then we're, we're adding guest parking towards the pond in between those buildings right there. So that's just part of, you know, trying to squeeze in parking spaces wherever we can.
Looked like there was 15 spots at the pool area too, for parking.
Okay, will there be individual mailboxes, or will it be community?
The community kiosk at the pool cabana. That's actually a requirement of the postal service now.
It is, and not just for these types of developments, but for single-family detached. The Dunes subdivision has the same thing.
All right, thank you. On the development agreement, it mentions rental six months, nothing less than six months. I know we had talked about that, and we were, you had mentioned that most of yours are a year, when, on the, on the other communities that you do, it's nothing less than a year, and you don't even allow a rental for the first year? It would be owner-occupied, or at least owner-owned, whether they occupied or not, and then no, no leases less than a year.
The only concern we had with that is some people will lease until they can buy. And so they're trying to get their financing and everything, so they're leasing the house until they can close. So sometimes those rental periods would be like seven months, you know, so that was our only concern with that. But we can make it a year, we'll just work around it.
So that'll be changed in the development agreement?
A year.
All right, thank you. I know you're going to have the HOA, and you're going to have sidewalks, so if you do plant oak trees or something in there, and they do lift the sidewalk, that's going to be the HOA's responsibility to maintain those sidewalks.
Yes, so.
We're not going to have oak trees planted next to sidewalks, because we have a land development regulation that says there has to be six to 12 feet of clearance. In the old days, we didn't have that, folks, but we have that. We also have tree root barriers, and there are 47 trees that the developer can choose from. An oak tree is only one of those 47, so we will be on them for.
All right, thank you very much, because we know what a problem we have with the trees lifting the sidewalk. All right, so the sign thing, or that little triangle, if that were to stay to the city, would there be power run out there to that little triangle? So if we're going to have that, and it's going to be part of the city, can we post that, that it belongs to the city, so that anybody who's around there knows at some point, 50 or even 100 years from now, there may be something there, so they don't always expect the foxes and the armadillos and all that, that there may be something there, if it's posted? All right, thank you, and if we do have to put something out there, is there access? You said there's road access, is it along the, the canal?
Yeah, I went back, there's, there's canal, you know, the canals need to be maintained, and so there's, most, most of the canals have that access road next to them that's wide enough for a work truck to, to go down.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, I wanted to thank you for the survey that was sent over. I was able to look at it online before the meeting, and it was very helpful to have the survey there. That was, thank you very much for doing that. That's my questions. All right, any, anything else before, before the, after the presentation? Any other questions? Everyone's asked their questions. I do not, I have the, a card from the owner, the owner would like to speak. Ms. Gutierrez.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. My name's Deborah Gutierrez, I'm the owner of this property, and I'm actually third generation. So my grandparents came down here from New York in the late 50s, and they started buying up property out in the middle of nowhere. My grandfather was a developer, and my father was an architect. My grandfather developed a lot of things that are in Melbourne, West Melbourne, Titusville, Cocoa. My dad was an architect of many numerous things, too long to list them all here. My father passed away five and a half years ago, but eight years ago, he started educating me on all the remaining pieces of property. He'd gotten to the point where he was just physically and mentally declining, to where he really couldn't continue to finish what he and his father and my grandmother had set out to do. When he did pass, I wound up selling the west part of the intersection, I-95 and 192. It's the Space Coast Town Center that Edgar Jones and his group, they purchased from me. This one piece, eight years ago, my father enlisted my help to try to sell it. It was zoned commercial. I sent out old-fashioned letters to multiple people that he thought may be interested. We did get a serious inquiry, and it was literally just a month before he passed, and so he just didn't have the stamina to, to go with it. I was under contract with the commercial, but after being under contract with it, they, for various reasons, decided to back out. I've had multiple, multiple inquiries, all for apartments. I cannot tell you how many times I've gotten the phone calls, and I would have to politely explain, no, it's zoned commercial. I've gotten phone calls for wanting to put hotels on, on the property, but they didn't want all of it. I'm not a developer, my goal was to sell the property, so I did not want to piecemeal it, because all of them wanted the, one, the 5.88 parcel next to I-95, because that's where they're going to get the most bang for their buck. They didn't want to be in that tiny little skinny L, because they don't have the, the traffic for it. I was approached also for a couple of different companies wanting to do the Live Local Act. As a landowner, spending my time and resources, trying to decide if the city of West Melbourne, how that was going to work, I chose not to go that route as a landowner, wanting to go down that path, so I kind of held out. When I was approached by this company, and they told me that they wanted to do town homes, how many do you want to put? 150. From a landowner in West Melbourne, I thought that was the best use of the area, to kind of see the fruition of my grandparents' vision for the whole area, to finish out this last remaining parcel on this quadrant. So I said, sure, let's go ahead and do it, let's go under contract, and I will help you go to the city and ask for rezoning and to change the future land map as well. So that's why I'm here to stand, you know, beside them, to have their project go forward. As a historical aspect of that tiny little triangle, my father developed Falcon Ridge, and he was the architect, and actually, that triangle, and I have the original plans, it was supposed to have been a monument with a fountain for Falcon Ridge. For whatever reason, he never told me why, it was never done, but that little piece of property, he just, obviously, he kept it. So I just need to sell it. It is, as a reminder, it's in the city, it's Bavard County, it's not the city of West Melbourne. So right now, I couldn't give it to you to put a sign on unless you wanted to buy it from me. But it is, the best use, looking at it, is with the tree ordinance that the city of West Melbourne has, my thought process immediately was, well, let's just annex it, maintain those gorgeous trees, and include it in the whole project for, for longevity. There was a billboard, believe it or not, and it was a wooden billboard, that my father had out there, and he rented it out, so I don't know if there are any old people here, but many, many years ago, it was a billboard, but it was wood, and it wound up just deteriorating, and he never rebuilt it or anything like that. So, yeah. Any questions, history, or any? No?
No, but thank you for sharing that, I thought that was very nice.
Good, thank you.
There was, there was no electric to that billboard?
No electric, no. And actually, it's kind of landlocked. Not only that, but the 5.88 acres on I-95, technically, that is landlocked. The only access is getting permission from the Melbourne Tillman, and I have been, for eight years, I've always been in, in talk with them of what to do for the potential developers, and we've come up with the best solution, so. And it was not recently, until recently, it was found out that the canal's actually, the majority of it, is on my property. And from a historical standpoint as well, that canal actually extended all the way north. So when my dad sold all that property to Coastal Commerce, it was part of their plan to make it all one big usable lot. So they actually purchased the canal from Melbourne Tillman, and then Coastal Commerce purchased the property to the east, that's that little pond, to, for all the stormwater there. So, anyway, but it's kind of a dry canal now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Frampton.
Quick question, the lot transfer, is any of this our approvals tonight, where we're making it kind of contingent on the lot coming to the city and stuff? How's that going to affect what we're doing tonight?
When you say the lot, you mean the triangular?
Triangular piece of.
I was actually going to ask if it didn't get clarified, is the direction of the council to get a conservation easement, or to obtain the fee simple ownership of the, of that?
I think it's to obtain the fee simple ownership of the lot.
Yeah, fee simple ownership.
So, yeah, we'll have in the development agreement, we'll have a provision that they are to transfer the lot, and then.
Obviously, the developer gets the tree credit from.
Right, they'll, they'll retain whatever credits they get for the trees, and as well as the acreage for the development, although they're not using the full number of units anyways. So, yeah, the, the transfer of property would happen at some point in the future, but it would be in the development agreement, so it would be enforceable that they would have to do it.
So, so we are closing with Ms. Gutierrez at LDP, so at land development permit. So I think that would be the most appropriate time, so otherwise, she's going to have to make that transfer. So let's, so I'll talk with you and the city manager more about that, and put that in the developer's agreement.
We can work those details out in the development agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
So our, our attorney will be getting ahold of you.
So that being said, do we have to change the language on this first part at all, or?
For the development agreement itself?
Yeah, for the.
So what you're being asked to do tonight is to approve on first reading the, the comp plan amendment, as well as the zoning. The development agreement only has to be approved once.
I meant 19, 25, 20, 19. Is, we have to adjust anything on that, or can it be as is?
No, I mean, the, the, this is the ordinance for the, the future land use. Yeah, so that, that doesn't need to be adjusted. We will adjust the comp plan, or, excuse me, the development agreement, bring it back with the, I've got eight different things that we're going to address and negotiate with them. When we bring it back in three weeks, it will have these changes, and then you'll be asked to approve the development agreement at that meeting.
And I forgot, did you need to read something before I make a motion?
I've already read the, the ordinances, however, we do need to open it up for public before we.
Oh, I thought you did that.
I did, I did.
Okay, we need to close the public hearing then.
Close the public hearing. I have no more cards, Ms. Gutierrez was the only one. We close.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading ordinance number 2025-19, as written.
Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Frampton, and a second for Mr. Bentley. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. All right, next item, 5B. Kristy, 5B.
We've already gone through A, B, and C, and so at this point.
You don't want a separate motion for all of them?
We do, we need a separate motion for it.
Okay.
This is ordinance 2025-20.
Okay, Mr. Frampton.
No changes, right? Approval, make a motion, we approve the first reading ordinance 2025-20, as written.
Ms. Volz?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Frampton, a second by Ms. Volz. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, all right. And C is going to be the, the development agreement, we're just going to approve that.
I think the attorney has stated he's known eight items.
Yeah, so we're going to need to bring the development agreement back in three weeks when we next meet, and you will be approving it at that time. There are not, there's not a second reading on that, so we don't need a, an approval tonight. We've gotten our direction for amendments to that, and we'll work on that with the developers.
And that'll be the first meeting in August, right?
Do we need to review any of the changes? You have everything, street lighting, the.
We do, we typically will go back through the CD, through the taping, and, and see what else we have to do.
Did you say CD?
Yeah, I say CD because I'm old, I'm older than you, sir.
Director Fisher, YouTube, we're going to go back through the YouTube.
Do you have to do a time certain on this at all, or no?
No, it'll come back the next meeting, assuming everything's ready.
All right, so the next item will be D, and that is Columbia Lane. Again, Ms. Fisher.
I, I can certainly go through a presentation for the public, if you all would like. It is a public hearing, so remember, these are agenda items that we've heard before. This is for the property that is on the west side of I-95. So if the attorney wants to go through quasi-judicial.
Yeah, so once again, if you've discussed this with anybody outside of staff, or reviewed anything outside of the materials, including visiting the site to, by yourself to get a feel for the site, you should disclose that at this time. Thank you.
All right, do you need to read anything, Mr. Carey?
We will have to read ordinances 2025-14 and 2025-15. I can do that now if you want, or I can do it after the presentation.
If I can ask for the public's knowledge, just to kind of go through this quickly, because it is a public hearing. Again, this property's on the west side of I-95, the site is shown in the image here of the aerial. We have not had this property in the city limits, it's finally in the city limits, it's next to what's Dobbs Equipment, and this is a small-scale amendment and the rezoning. This property is a 14.35 acres, and as I said, we, we've gone through the discussion about this property before. What, once they come into the city, they asked for the commercial future land use, so that's what that first ordinance is about. And we go through all the analysis, as we did in our past meetings, and then the rezoning is also, again, since they're in the city now, we need to assign them a city zoning district, and so that would be Commercial Parkway. And we went through all of that. So you, you did all the motions for the first reading, June 17th, that's why we're before you now, and we had, we have no change for our recommendations or the planning and zoning boards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. With that in mind, and knowing that there's no changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-14, as written.
All right, thank you, and Mr. Bentley.
Did we do the public, or we don't have to? I second it.
I don't, I don't have any cards.
Okay, second.
Yeah, there, there should be an invitation, in case anybody forgot to put in a card, and then formally close the public hearing first.
We'll make the invitation. Did Ed, would anyone like to speak on this item before we close the public hearing? There are no cards, and I see no hands raised, we will close the public hearing, all right? In that matter, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, we have a second from Mr. Bentley, all those in favor, please signify.
Before, before we vote, can I read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Bavard County, Florida, amending the future land use map with a comprehensive plan to change the future land use on a parcel of land, approximately 14.35 plus or minus acres located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein, from Bavard County Community Commercial to city of West Melbourne Commercial, and providing an effective date. And I will also read the companion ordinance, which is 2025-15, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Bavard County, Florida, rezoning a 14.35 plus or minus acre parcel of land, generally located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein, from Bavard County BU1, general retail commercial to city of West Melbourne CP Commercial Parkway, providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, so that takes care of E and F. All right, thank you. All right, so we'll just move right along here, we have a motion on the floor, we still have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, and a second from Mr. Bentley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right. D and F.
I need a separate motion.
We need a motion for E, which is the ordinance 2025-15.
2025-15, all right, thank you.
We did 14. No, we did 14.
Yes, we did 14. All right, Ms. Volz, your light is on? Ms. Volz, your light is on? Yes? Yes?
My light is on. I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and approve ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen rezoning the property of fourteen point three five acres.
For clarification, is this fifteen or sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yes, it's fifteen.
It is fifteen. Okay, all right, thank you. We've moved on. Just wanted to be clear. All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Foltz and Mr. Bentley?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Bentley, Mr. Bentley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item will be F.
I turned my light off. I didn't have a question.
Okay, this is a continuation also from a previous case. This is the property that the city owns off of Dairy Road. And again, I'll let the attorney do the quasi judicial disclosures.
Thank you. Same as before, if you've received any information outside of this hearing or the materials provided by staff, including viewing the property to get a sense of it, please disclose it at this time.
I'm sure I drove past it.
All right, I have no lights on, so there are no disclosures.
All right, so the background again is that this is on the west side of Dairy Road, and it's south of the Fairmont subdivision, not along Whispering Winds, but it's it's really next to that city canal. The agenda item five F is a conference of plan map amendment. That's ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen. And then I don't think those numbers are right.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I don't know why it says those numbers. Sorry.
We had to add one last minute. That's my apologies.
Ah, okay. But the the city has said that it may use the property in the future for utility improvements. The previous action in June is that you all, first we had to annex in the property, so remember, even though the city owned it, it wasn't in our city limits. We brought it in. But then we found out there was a typo in the title of the ordinance, and that's why we're bringing it back to you as first reading for both the conference of plan map amendment and the rezoning. The planning and zoning board, as your local planning advisory board, they did do their meeting on June eleventh, and they recommended approval. So again, we would be going to something that the city could use for a future land use designation, and that would be institutional. And then for the rezoning, it would also be P one, which is the zoning district for any of the the governmental types of uses.
You said first reading, right?
Yes.
Okay, because it still says second reading in the agenda, so it's just.
Well, it it should be, because we had it in the last meeting.
The second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash.
Yeah, the the title issue was with the rezoning, I believe, so I think it is the second reading of the comp plan amendment, because I think that title was correct.
Yeah, the the comp plan was fine, and so this is second reading of the comp plan and first reading of the zoning ordinance, and we'll have to bring that one back for second reading.
And if the attorney could help us with the titles, please.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, if I may, two more ordinances to read. Twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map with a conference of plan to change the future land use on parcel of land totaling one point five one plus or minus acres located at thirty ten Dairy Road, as more fully described herein from Brevard County Residential Fort to City of West Melbourne Institutional, providing an effective date. And ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning one point five one acres of property located at thirty ten Dairy Road, as as more fully described herein from Brevard County Suburban Residential and Rural Residential to City of West Melbourne Institutional, providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Bentley?
I'll let you do a public announcement, and then I want to make a motion.
All right, thank you. Public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you. Make a motion, we approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, I'll second.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley, a second by Ms. Adams. All those in favor.
She had her light on. I was just wondering.
Yes, I see it now. It's gotta be me in the light. Ms. McGuire, did you want to ask a question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Seven zero. Twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. You did sixteen.
Seventeen.
Ms. McGuire?
Okay, I will make the motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen as written.
Mr. Gaylord?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. McGuire and a second by Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, we will move on to my. Okay, thank you. Public forum, thank you. I have three cards for public forum. Mark Albert? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mark Albert. I live at twenty-seven twelve Glassburn Circle. It's part of the Hammock Lakes community.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
All right, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, I'm speaking in front of you today about the project at the Hammock Lakes Park. It's tucked behind the east and west side of the Hammock Lakes community. I believe it's been discussed in previous meetings. In the past, the city has widened access to the path over off Glassburn, and recently there's been a lot of increase in the past year of city trucks that have been accessed daily, as all is heavy equipment, and then there's also a lot of pedestrian access. I'm standing here just because there's a lot of confusion about what the plans are for the park, and I'm hoping you guys can provide some clarity, for myself as well as some of our neighbors that are over there in the back. The big misunderstanding in the community is what is the long term plan for the park? Has been unclear. We weren't notified when there was gonna be a new path put on the HOA property, so we're wondering what the long term plan is. What will the normal traffic look like? Currently, there's a truck that goes there twice a day on just about every working day. What will be done to keep civilian vehicles out? We've had pedestrian vehicles go back there and access the city property. And then there's also instances of them going back there and just doing like golf carts or four wheelers and stuff like that. What is the city planning to do to reduce that? And then how are we keeping pedestrians safe, particularly the children that go back there? They like to access the park through that entrance, so what are we doing to keep the kids in the community safe? And also the wildlife back there? There's a lot of nature. Actually, there's a large mulch pile currently, and it's on top of Turtle Nest, and you also see a lot of bird traffic. So what is the city's plan in regards to that? Let's see. And then in regards to that mulch pile, it seems to be like it's storm debris, not actual mulch. Just looks like stuff that's been cut up through a mulcher. What is the plan for that? Because it's a fire hazard. There's also termites and pests. Like I said, there have been like turtles, and I have pictures of it. It's on top of their nests, so you see them coming out of it. And then. And then also, there has been a considerable amount of trees and debris that's been removed back there. Some of it looks nice, but what is the city's plan on removing trees? Because there's a lot of lots that back up to that area, and there's conservation easements around that area. So what is the city's plan for that as well? That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Now, we did have quite a conversation about this part at our last meeting, Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, so currently, we reached out to the the HOA board. We proposed a car barrier, kind of a bollard system, and waiting for approval from the HOA on that design so that we can restrict, I guess you'd call, non-city vehicles from being able to get back there, but still allow with a with a bollard mechanism that the bollard would come out with a with the lock system that the public vehicles, the city vehicles, will be able to get back there to maintain. The mulch piles in process of being removed, but the the tree removals that happened back there was to clear that area out so we could get better access. A lot of that was scrub brush to be able to get back into the park with vehicles, maintenance vehicles, to be able to maintain. As far as cutting any other trees on private property or conservation area, to my knowledge, we have not cut any trees on private property or conservation area. The only trees that we removed was along that trail from Glassburn to the park, which is the city's property, the city's park, so. Did I answer all your questions? You had you had a few. I I wrote I wrote down as many as I could.
So in regards to the trees, we're more that area is very green currently, and we last thing we want to see, and what the HOA told us during one of our board meetings, was that in conversations with the city, that the city could just clear that lot and put parking for city vehicles or use it to store more green waste. So we just want to make sure that the plan isn't to like clear that back area and just make it a lot for storage or waste.
Yeah, and and unfortunately, there's, you know, the the, you know, the the rumor mill is a little wilder than the than the truth. So as mentioned at the previous council meeting when this came up, in building our water plant site, the city had the tree tree debris, which was mulched up from the last hurricane on the water plant site. Contractor, we started the water plant site project, and so we wanted to utilize some of that mulch, but needed to get it out of there, and so we moved it over to that site. Not where it's gonna stay or be, that was just a spot that the city had that we could get it to until we could get rid of it. So there's no desire to use that that little part of the park as any kind of storage or debris center. That was just a spot that we had that we had access to to be able to utilize and keep that project moving. What was your other question? I'm sorry.
Another question is just what is normal traffic gonna look like? Because I understand there's gonna be some heavy equipment to get the mulch out, and we've seen that.
Yep.
But on the day to day, is it just gonna be like a.
It's just the maintenance, yeah, just the maintenance. You know, we have a we have a pickup truck with trailers for the mowers, so it'll be just any maintenance that we do to the park, that would be the access point.
And then we also have looked at the park's plan, and we're planning on going to the meeting for the Parks and Rec tomorrow. But in regards to that, are you aware of any additional, like they're gonna do some heavy equipment, traffic through there to upgrade like the basketball courts and the playground? Are you aware of any of that and the timeframe on those projects and what that looks like?
Yep, so the city did a parks master planning and I and took a look, a comprehensive look at each of the parks and improvement areas, and part of that process was evaluating each park. That process is still, there's certainly no decisions on that park, but if there if we were to redo the basketball or we were to increase any of the the playground equipment there, we would we would be coming in with trucks to to do that. That would be the access point.
Okay, so I guess kind of the gist, and maybe you can confirm this, is that the city's plan with the park isn't to make it look different or turn that back area into a storage facility. It's purely just to use that as a easement to access the park for maintenance and future activities.
Correct. We the only improvements I'm aware of for that park are gonna be to improve that park. We're not, I I know there was some a rumor that we were gonna put a building there or something. We have, we are, we are building a fifty-two million dollar water plant that has a new public works facility that's going to house the parks and all their equipment. We have no desire to put a building there. I have not been part of any discussion for a building or for any other thing to happen there, but I'm I'm always happy to answer those questions.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
Before we move on, Mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Rhodey, do we have a timeline for when the mulch is being moved?
My understanding is about half the mulch has been removed. They've been doing it when they have free trucks and free guys available at the end of the day to take loads to the dump.
So sometime soon.
So we, my understanding is half of it is gone, and I continue to push to get the other half gone. That was that was a good so that was a good solution for a tough spot we were in, but, you know, our our goal was never to have a mulch pile there. It was to solve the problem at hand.
Okay, thank you.
I can confirm it's halfway gone, but it's still a very significant pile.
Yeah, it we're we're going at it. We're we're going at it.
All right, thank you very much. Melanie McCullough?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. I'm Melanie McCullough, the Director of Public Relations for APWD Florida, Americans Persons with Disabilities, and we are pleased to announce the city of West Melbourne as the most disabled friendly city of the year for the year two thousand twenty-five. We would like to present Andrea Young and Pat Bentley with the award at the next council meeting, and we would like to invite the community to come celebrate the anniversary of the ADA Act at the Field of Dreams, August ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The Field of Dreams Park is a specialty park for disabled residents, and we look forward to working with West Melbourne to keep this a thriving ground for persons with disabilities and their caregivers. Thank you very much. The invitation will be published via Facebook at www.facebook.com APWDFloridaHQ. And we're gonna leave you with our lovely mugs, and we are excited to present this next award to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is lovely.
Yes, thank you very much for all your consideration.
What time's the presentation gonna be on the ninth?
So on the ninth, it's gonna be an all-day event at the park, and all the details for that will be published again at www.facebook.com APWDFloridaHQ. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, and you waited all that time, and you were so polite. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Ellen Segal. Do state your name and address, please, for the record.
Alan, excuse me, Alan Segal, two six six four, Sam Sneed Street, West Melbourne, Florida. The name of our community is Palm Garden Lakes. Many of you, if you've been here a long time, know where this used to be, the Palm Gardens Golf Course. I'm sorry.
It's me.
That's me.
I'm looking for.
Something wrong?
No, you're fine.
Okay. We have a little confusion with city department. We are a zone residential. Most of the properties have a point-two size piece of property. We have a history of a problem with the city, but I'm not I'm not gonna go by the history of the mistake that was made. We have a resident who has, we have a lot of complaints, I'll say, about one resident who has adopted and put in chickens and a rooster that wakes everybody up in the morning. For the guys who are on light night shift, they don't like it. Okay? We have tried, it is a violation of our HRO documents. We're considered a private community, but your laws do overwrite our documents from time to time, and the fact that we're not zoned for agriculture or RIA, I think it is, they're not allowed to have these chickens and rooster there. So our property manager contacted code enforcement on our behalf. Code enforcement refused to come out because they said it's in the backyard of this property. It's actually in the side yard. It's right alongside the right side fence when you're facing the house. And we we were lucky enough to get pictures of the coop, you know, and the owner's trying to cover it with all this vine stuff so you can't see it, you know, if you had a drone to fly over or something like that. And so they would not accept the photos. They want photos of live chickens or the rooster. Well, obviously, they're not free-range chickens running all over the property. And there's a fence there, so how are we supposed to get any other additional pictures? We expect that code enforcement followed the law. This is a violation of city law. And we are getting no assistance from them. So we went to the next step. If you can't get the city to act, you go to the county to see what their laws are. It's a violation of county law. So we called Animal Control. Animal Control dispatched an officer, who then went to code enforcement first, who then said, and never showed up at the property, because the code enforcement officer told him no. So I'm asking the county, you know, the council here, how do we handle this situation? Why are we getting zero cooperation with the city? We love the, I personally love the city, okay? I want the city to act on our behalf. This is not something we should just do as a lawsuit against enforcing our laws, you know, documents and stuff like that. This is a violation of city law. So how do we get help?
Mr. Gaylord, do you have your light on?
I do. Well, thank you for coming to council. Mr. Rhodey, I'm familiar with, I have some friends that do beekeeping, and I know we have ordinances against beekeeping. And I would assume that we also have ordinances against chickens and roosters. Have you heard anything about this issue from code enforcement? About this particular issue?
Yeah, I have not. Is it Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Segal, I'm happy to get ahold of you, probably not tonight, tomorrow. I'm happy to get ahold of you tomorrow and take a look at this and try to get you a resolution for it. I'm not, you know, not quite sure of this one. I haven't heard of this one before, but I'm happy to work with you. And I won't ask for your phone number because you're talking into a mic. But I'll ask Mr. Bradford if he can get your phone number and your contact information. And we'll get ahold of you in the morning.
And as, just as a side note, if I can say, when you guys run for office from time to time, we're not a large community. We're only 97 homes, you know? But you still want to talk to our members, you're welcome. We have our meetings on the third Monday of every month at one church nearby. And you're all welcome to attend when you want, not all at once, but, you know, as you need it.
Are you on the board? Are you on the HOA?
I'm the president of the HOA.
All right, good.
Which I sometimes regret. But as, we love West Melbourne. I moved up here from South Florida, so. And I've been here with the community, it's five years old now, I think. So, and we love it. We just, when we need help, we need help.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, I do not have any more cards, so we will close public comment in the next is consent agenda. Mr. Frampton.
I'll make a motion that we pass the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. I need another light. Ms. McGuire.
I think you all second that motion.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries consent agenda, thank you, 7-0. Okay, next item. Millage rate, Mr. Rhodey.
Hi. Oh, the moment we've all been waiting for. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's action is the discussion relative to the city's 2025-26 millage rate. Again, I'll just take a step back for the public and clarify that we have till the end of the month to get to the county our proposed millage rate. That rate, whatever this body decides this evening, that's why it's before you this evening. This body, whatever rate that this body decides, the council can adopt that or go lower, but they cannot go higher. And so this is in an effort to get out the notices to the public as to what their potential tax bill will be. And it's very important that we set that number this evening. And so we put a small presentation. And Director Blake and myself are going to tag team this a little bit and go back and forth and talk about some potential options for this evening. And then ask that the council weigh those options and make a decision, so.
Can you clarify one thing?
Oh, sorry, yes.
It says in the beginning, it says a proposed millage rate. And then on the next page, it says that you propose a millage rate and the numbers are different.
Yes, so very, the office pool goes to several people who indicated that Councilmember Frampton would catch that error. So that number, the reason that number is there is when the state budget got finalized and the property appraiser and the property assessor were able to give us our final numbers. And when we got our final numbers, it went down to, a rollback would be the $1.81. That's what rollback would have been on our preliminary numbers that the county gave us. And so. A $1.81 is the rollback number. And that number was from our draft that we put together before we had our final numbers. And so I apologize for that.
Thank you.
First slide, Ms. Blake, and, oh. So I always like to point out, this is kind of the general overview. And it also does a way easier job than me or that other members of the council saying that we continue to grow. This is what our gross taxable value is. Again, going back only five years to 2021, we were at $2.1 billion. We are now sitting at $3.3 billion of total value. So that is the total value of all the property here in the beautiful city of West Melbourne. And that points out our growth tremendously.
For those that care, that's a 35% growth over the five years.
Which is, which is good. We are a growing community. So just given a little history, while we haven't rolled back every year, the last five years, we have implemented the rollback. And you can see where that number, that number has gone down. And one might say, well, if you're rolling back, why is the number going down so quickly? And that, that is solely attributed to our growth, right? So as the, as the piece of pizza pie gets larger, the slices that each individual property owner pays get smaller and smaller. And so that rollback number, if we were to be a community, say a beachside community, that was stable in value and growth and didn't have stable value or growth, that rollback number each year would be very similar to the number before, the number the year before. But as we continue to grow, that rollback number continues to shrink. And so that's why we get, that's why we've been able to go down to, this year, .188, down to a possibility of .81, so $1.81. So we always try to give some options and then, you know, really encourage some discussion on this item. But in order to give a little context, we added this slide in so that people could under, not only the council, but Citizens Watch and could get a little flavor of what some of these numbers do and what they bring in. And so what we're looking at here is millage rate, so a proposed millage rate. And we have three options. That's the millage rate column. If we were to do a slight, or if we were to keep the same millage rate as we are right now, so we're at $1.88, if we were to keep that, that would generate about 3.81% increase. But that would be an 8.6%, an 8.6% increase over the previous year. So that would feel like an 8% increase to the average homeowner. And so that's at 59.4.
Flip those. So 3.8 increase to the homeowner, 8.5 increase to the city, yes.
The 25-26, if we were to take a middle position, if you will, so not rollback, but not holding the line at the $1.88, that's about a percent and a half. And that would bring in about $5.8 million. Or about 7.5 additional revenue to the city. The possibility of a rollback for 25-26 of $1.81, now that we have the final numbers, would be a 0% increase, 5.723 million of ad valorem coming in, which is still almost a 5 point, let's call it 5.6% increase in revenue to the city. And so we've had discussions in the past since I've been here about, you know, how many years can we do rollback? At what point are we not going to be able to rollback? And my answer has been the same, which is as we continue to grow and bring in new property that pays property tax and makes that pizza pie larger, so those slices stay small, the rollback is still very doable. And, you know, we're in a good financial position. At some point, we are not going to be able to rollback. At some point, the rollback number is not going to be able to support the growth of the budget, as we know. And our budget per se has not grown, but the cost has grown. You know, labor, materials, utilities, all those items that we pay does go up. But because we're able to grow, we're able to balance that growth with the additional tax revenue, even with a rollback of almost 5.6%. And so that's really kind of the crux of the discussion tonight. And just wanted to give you some rough numbers to kind of see what some of those options are. And then give you a context of those dollar amounts, so. I'll turn it over to Candace as I lose my voice.
I will take on the city manager's recommendation at that point then. So our recommendation for tonight is to establish a proposed millage rate of 1.8151 for advertising purposes. And then to also set the public hearing on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. Later this evening, you will have an item on the agenda to modify the council meeting dates. The earliest that we can hold a budget public hearing is September 3rd. So that is why we had to move it from our normal September 2nd council meeting date. So that is our recommendation. And then just kind of a reminder that, you know, after following that hearing and everything, you will have the second public hearing on September 16th that would be setting the actual tax rate officially and approving your budget.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that concludes our short presentation. Maybe if we want to just stay on the slide, that kind of shows the numbers. And then we are open to any questions or discussion.
Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, here we are. So I have had several discussions with the city manager and with the finance manager on this. And they provided me some information on where our funds come from. And I've done some calculations on them, so I kind of want to review them with the council. But when they handed us the sheet tonight that shows a taxable value certificate, if we rolled back, we'd still be having a 4.2% increase on that number due to the new projects that are coming in and the assessed values. So even if we do a rollback, we're still increasing that part of our budget, the ad valorem part, by 4.2%. Then I wanted to highlight that most of our money comes from Florida Power and Light franchise fees, Waste Management franchise fees, the utility on Florida Power and Light and City of West Melbourne utility, and the telecommunications tax. And that's outside of the ad valorem tax. As you guys know, we have a fairly well-rounded pool of monies that we have coming in. So we're not dependent upon ad valorem taxes like perhaps some other communities. And I went back and calculated the increases in percent each year over the last five years of those other categories. Not the ad valorem, because he's provided you that data. But from 2021, or 2020 to 2021, our budget in those other categories, which are something like 80% of our budget in that comparison point, went up 5.8%. From 2021 to 2022, it went up 10%. 2022 to 2023, even with the rollbacks now, it went up 12.7%. And then 23 to 24, it's up as well again that year. So we also have seen the residents that are going to have a 30% increase in their fire assessment this year. It's already a done deal. We also know that we're bringing on what I call Led Zeppelin Project, the Zeppelin Project. And that's going to bring us on the order of 500K, which is, if you look at the difference there, that's huge on his charge. That's worth a couple of mils right there. That's an automatic increase once that project comes in. I did talk to Candace, I said, you know, we have all these projects that we're talking about doing. And, you know, it's buy land, it's build a building department, it's build maybe a community center, it's other things that are including there well. And Mr. Rhodey and I sat down and kind of tried to add those numbers up. If we did everything that the city said they even thought about wanting to do, we would still have something like 7 million in our free money account, if you want to call it that. Our money.
Our cash reserve.
Reserve account at the end of the day, because we're over 20 million currently. By law, we're required to have something on the order of 200,000 in that account. So we're going to be over 7 million if we decided to do everything that we've talked about. So. So I'm, in the end, I'm trying to see if there's anything else that I wanted to highlight. I just think it's, we're incredibly fortunate to be in West Melbourne to have our well-rounded budget that we can lower our millage rate every year. And it's the smallest part of our budget. So we, we've been getting these almost double-digit increases two of the four years and 6% the other years. Just by doing, by rolling it back, we've been getting that. So that's, I don't know, at some point, to me, it just almost feels like greed if we were to say, let's max out every possible bucket we can. Of that bucket of money, we're maxing out 80% of it already. 20%, my proposal would be to, and the city manager proposal would be to let that one rollback. So I would make a motion that, okay, sure.
Your comments are still based on, all that's based on growth, right?
No.
Because those other accounts, the FPL and all that stuff, have increased because of our growth, right?
Well, no, not.
Well, dual purpose, right? So FPNL is a good one to talk about because it's also, it's clearly the largest one, but it's also one that's very practical. Everybody understands, you know, their electric bill. It's, it has grown because we have grown, but it has also grown because they have raised their rates. And when they raise their rates, you know, our.
Our cut gets.
Our percentage of that stays the same as it does with all other, you know, Brevard County communities. And so that's, you know, when you look at the blessing that West Melbourne is, when we started the community, you know, we weren't a taxing community. And then, you know, at some point, we had to start charging ad valorem tax. And we purposely kept that ad valorem tax low because we wanted, we wanted to capture, we wanted to capture that revenue from all the sources. If you're only dependent on the property tax, then you live or die by the property tax. And so we, you know, that was a strategy done, you know, 15, 20 years ago, was started and has stayed in effect. I will also add, I think Deputy Mayor Bentley's comments were very good. We've had a lot of discussions, and as many of you know him, he's very thorough to the third decimal point. And, you know, what also needs to be said is, again, you know, 12 years ago, this community was in tough financial shape, more like 14 years ago. And really made the decision to start putting cash aside for items that we knew were coming due. And that has allowed the budget to stabilize. When we have to buy police vehicles, when we have to buy public works and utility vehicles, we have that cash that we've been putting away each year and continue to do this year so that we can purchase those and not have it hit the budget really hard. We have that for the police pension. We put the right amount away so that it's fully funded. We do that in all of our categories. And that really allows us to be able to do these projects and have the cash to be able to pay for them without getting in trouble of using tax dollars to live off of.
If I can add just a little bit onto that. I think it was probably about 10 years ago that this council agreed to set a fund balance reserve policy. So it goes with just general practice standards anyway for the GFOA recommendations and things. But we do have that 20% of the operating fund. And so, or our operating expenditures that we have in general fund. So we do have about that $2 million in our reserve that we keep, set by council policy, so that we have it in there. And then on top of that, anything over that is really kind of what we look at for these different projects and things like that. But that was a council decision that was made during this time while we were kind of getting everything set up so that we could have a good future and be able to support these kind of millage rates.
Thank you, Candace.
20 million is all reserve money above our budget?
That's the.
That's our current cash reserve.
Yeah. And if we did everything, we'd still have 7 million at the end of the, and I don't think we'll do everything, but that's everything that we discussed. So.
Is there a motion in?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we go with the city manager's proposed military of 1.815, or is the number now different?
No, that is the correct number.
Per $1,000 of taxable value. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. For lack of any other words, I will just second that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Gaylord. I'm sorry, Mr. Gaylord.
Yeah, I had a question. Just wanted to say I appreciate Councilmember Bentley's data points there. Candace, I did have a question for you. So we have the trim calculation percentage change. Are there any data points that you have access to? And Mr. Rody, you may have access to this as well. This was asked at the last business advisory board meeting when we were talking about this. If we had any data points about the average real dollar value increase for like average home property values in West Melbourne?
I can certainly pull that, but what I presented at the last budget workshop, I believe, was a slight decrease for the average that I had, or it was just a couple of dollars. But I did not run that with this new military, but I can certainly pull that and provide that to Mr. Rody to share with the council.
Yeah, it was just asked at the last business advisory board meeting, so I request that data point.
And one caveat I'll always put to that when we talk about average property tax, which is different, Florida is different than other states, and obviously, we have a lot of new people moving here, and so I do want to mention it, is that on a city, on a city block, if you take 10 houses that are in a row, and of course, all 10 houses aren't valued exactly the same dollar amount, but, you know, for the sake of this discussion, if every home was $300,000 of value, just by pure luck, that 10 houses in a row were that, it's very hard to do, it's very hard to say what the average tax for that community is because of the different incentives. And the longer you live in your house, the less you pay in taxes, the less that the taxable value that the city can tax on is. And so if somebody, that's a hard, we can do the averages, but know that if you and your neighbor both have a $300,000 house, there's a chance you're both not paying the same tax bill.
Sure. And I'm not asking for the world here, I just.
Yeah, we can definitely get averages.
The general taxpayer information, right? So, thanks.
All right, thank you. No more questions? All right, so there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Bentley, and there's a second by Ms. Adams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. This was a fun one. Mr. Lieutenant Romano is going to tell us about some police equipment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for having me here. Those who do not know me, my name is Tony Romano. I'm a commander with current investigations and support services. So I'm going to briefly speak about a device we are looking at and we're going to recommend. So in the previous fiscal year, we took about $18,700 in forfeiture funds. Now, statute states, once we seize 15,000 or more, we must expend or donate at least 25% to identify program. We would need to spend a minimum of 4,680. We have discretion to use proceeds for further drug prevention or crime prevention. We've identified a camera which we can use covertly in our drug investigations and other special investigations. This camera system comes with tools needed, so the camera can be used upon arrival. The total cost of the camera is $9,099. Now, I'd show you photos of this camera and how cool it is, but unfortunately, this is something we want to keep covertly, obviously away from public view. I'm going to be free to meet you afterwards and show you photos, but to really talk about it in this setting here would not be good, obviously, for our future investigations. But I can assure you, this camera will help us, because we don't have anything like it. We could use it in different spaces, and it's smaller than what we have now and more versatile. Also comes with a modem also, and also an area to put a chip in, a cellphone chip, where we can monitor it via remotely and also record like we do now with our camera systems. So any questions about this camera? Try to answer it.
Mr. Frampton?
So, you know, I did a little research on it.
Yes.
Talked to you earlier about it. How many other companies did you check with as far as the cameras go, as far as this type of camera?
So doing this job for about 17 years, I'm pretty versatile in surveillance equipment and cameras. I got this recommendation from one of our SIU detectives who recently attended a class, basically UC investigations and current investigations. So I based it off his recommendation that he got from the class from other.
Are you only going to tell me one? Are you only going to tell me one?
I'm going to tell you one that we recommend at this point. I can tell you also Flock that we use and tell you all their cameras there, but I've looked at the.
My only concern is like I pointed out to you, that 2.1 megapixel camera and not being able to adjust up or anything for the price point that we're talking about, it just seems a little low to me. I know you talked about the transmission of it and stuff, but it just, without having anything to compare it to, it just seems like the megapixel rating on the camera is significantly lower than what's out there currently.
From what we have now, the cameras we use now, we can't use, like, I want to use this camera?
That's why I wanted a comparison of something to look at. We're spending, you know, a lot of money on a camera. I just thought it would be nice to have something to compare it to. Typically, when we're spending this much money on something, we're going out and getting multiple bids on these things, and we're not just doing it on hearsay and things like that. And I was, I was kind of hoping that you put a little more research into it than just a recommendation from somebody, so I'm sorry. I just, I think a little more research should have went into it, and so, thank you.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you. There any other questions from the council? Mr. Bentley?
To go for it, but I didn't look through the specifications. I can't argue with Mr. Frampton that 2 megapixels are 10-year-old, 15-year-old technology. Is that really the one that you want? I mean, I'm here to help you guys, but that just seems like not very much resolution.
I'm not going to be an expert in megapixels, and I refer to.
Most cameras that I have, 35 megapixel or more. But 2 is, I mean, I don't know how big you're going to try to make your picture, that would be awfully grainy.
We wouldn't use this as we do our cameras now. Cameras we have now, we use for far away, so we can monitor from a certain distance, obviously. And this would be not used for that. This would be used for other investigations where we can get close up, maybe hone in on narcotic sales or something like that. And we could use it in different ways to hide the camera, it's small enough to hide. The camera we have now is larger and pretty expensive. What we have now is PTZ zoom with pretty good magnification. So unfortunately, cameras go up, looks like every year. They're expensive, especially when you have a camera like this that comes with a full package, this bundle with a modem and also a power distribution center. We work with our IT department. We're very fortunate to have a great IT department that helps with things like this, to get us online and to view remotely, so.
Has Tom Bradford reviewed this?
I don't believe he has reviewed it. I know I spoke about it with other IT personnel. Hate to put Christian on the spot, but he's, actually, Christian is the person we go to with questions like this. He helps out with our cameras now, and I don't want to call him up here, but I trust his judgment when it comes to this stuff and talk together.
Is there a timeline on when we need to spend the money? Is there a timeline on when this needs to get spent, chief?
Well, we have to spend at least, like I said, 40.
Is there a deadline?
Deadline, not that I know of, but we know we probably should do it very soon, per statute.
Would you be opposed to getting more research?
No, I would, I agree with Steve on this. I would just ask, I'll buy the thing as far as voting for it. I would support you guys 100%, but I would ask that we find out if there's higher resolution cameras that are just as small perhaps, or have all the other qualities that you're looking for. I admit, I don't know what all you're doing, and I haven't seen what this particular camera looks like. But I'd rather spend another 5K or something, or whatever the number is, if it gets you something that is better.
Absolutely agree with you. I mean, I would love to spend 5,000 more, but.
It's not even about spending the money, it's about getting the.
It's getting high quality. I'm not, it's not, I don't even care about the money part of it. I care about getting a product that's the best product, that can do what you want it to do. And 2 megapixels, it's really, I didn't even know they made that kind of technology still.
Well, I agree with you on getting the best, and I've done that in the past, in the last camera I bought for the unit. So I thought the same thing. 4K, it's a couple thousand dollars. I don't remember, maybe $4,500 for this camera. And when we get it, it's not really that great. We can't really move it, and we come to find out, working with Christian, it's too high the resolution, it's 4K, right? We have to go down to 1080 for it to work properly, maybe even lower.
You don't even have that option because this camera won't allow you to, all 8K, 4K cameras allow you to reduce the resolution. You don't have the option to even increase the resolution on this. It's, I just, I'd just like to see some comparison of, you know, other products out there. I don't, I have a problem with spending the money either. Like Pat said, I just, I just want to have something to compare it to.
Mr. Rody, you trying to get in?
Yeah. Commander Romano, are there a couple other options in the marketplace on these?
Currently, we're testing a Condor unit from Flock, because I wanted to use it in the same manner, and not working the best the way we thought right now. Unfortunately, we can't use it the way we want, like the Hermit Cam. So we've tested other cameras out currently. Actually, we have one right now out in the city that we're testing called the Condor. So we've, we've tested some cameras, Wise cameras, we've tested those kind of the same manner. We wanted something a little bit smaller so we could conceal it in different areas and be more effective in our investigations, and we thought this Hermit Cam was the answer.
You haven't checked other similar products out that give you the cell phone? You gave us one, one camera based on a reference from somebody. I mean, it's.
One of my detectives who I trust.
No, I'm not, you know, and he saw it at a conference, or, you know, I mean.
He was at a class specifically for.
Right. So, I mean, I've done, in the past year, I've done a lot of research on cameras, and it just seems like there's so much new stuff out there that you could probably give us a couple examples of what you compared it to. And then if you come back and you say, hey, this is, this is the best thing, we compared it to these other three or four products, I have no problem spending the money. I just.
I understand.
All right.
I'm just, I don't know how big you're going to blow this up, but 2.7, it's not going to blow up much. I mean, that's, that's really old.
I'm going to, like I said, I don't want to be an expert at this stuff.
Right.
Christian and our other IT department to kind of steer me in the right direction if 2.0.
He wants to talk on it.
And we don't know your application, so I mean.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly have, yeah, we certainly, we certainly have time. You know, the statute is designed for you not to build up a big pool of money, right? You confiscate funds or confiscate vehicles that you, you turn over into cash. The intent is that you use it. And so, you know, whether, whether we do this tonight or we do this at the next meeting is, you know, not going to matter. So why don't we, why don't we table this item till the next council meeting, and we'll, we hear what you're saying with some comparables, and then we'll get some better tech specs. Again, some of that we might just email to the council, so we're trying to, we're trying to balance this line of not, you know, this is meant for covert operations, so we don't want to have too much stuff in the council packet, but we'll get that to individual council members.
And I think all of us will absolutely support what you want to do. I just want to be sure.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Romano. Thank you very much. All right, next item, 8C. This is again, Mr. Rody. This is a resolution to revise the council schedule.
Well, while it, while it has my name, I work very closely with the city clerk.
Ah, okay.
And as mentioned earlier, we do need to change the date for our public hearing. And then we also have a secondary item that we identified, which is planning to do National Night Out for the first, that's the first Tuesday of August. And so that is a conflict with the council meeting. What we've done in the past is either moved it up a day or back a day, and then just had that meeting as needed. And so what we're proposing is to move it up a day to that Monday, and just wanted to verify that that worked for everybody. If we do have a meeting that day, we'll just keep it to, you know, logistical items that are timely. You know, we won't have a, you know, we won't add on to that agenda and make a big meeting out of it, but we'll do anything that's timely logistical and then be able to get that done. So we'll be able to then, on the next night, participate in our National Night Touring.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think in terms of that information, it makes sense to make the adjustments as recommended. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-12 to revise the 2025 regular city council meeting schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylord.
I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor of changing, of amending the council schedule, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.
Two dates were changed, right?
Yep, two dates. So the one was the first public hearing for the budget. The state doesn't allow us to do it 15 days, the 15, you have to be within the 15-day window, and our, just by chance, our council meeting on that Tuesday night is the 16th day. So we had to push that back in order to be in the state's window, and there's good reason for that. The state creates a window so that every property tax owner knows what that window of all those tax hearings will be. Otherwise, you'd have communities doing it a month early or trying to do it at the last minute, and so they designate that timeframe that you can be in to do your public hearings for budgets.
Okay, all right. Next item is 8D, and again, this is Mr. Rody. This is dedication of the lift station for Sunrise Estates.
I will actually turn this over to City Attorney Kerry as it's the exciting item of taking land underneath a lift station.
Thank you. So as you probably know, when we have development in the city, the developer is responsible for developing the construction, or the construction of the public assets that support the development. The developer does have to pay for the development that they're developing, and in this case, we have the developer built a lift station for Sunrise Estates, as well as the sewer equipment that's underground. We've done all of our checks. The lift station is functioning properly. We have a maintenance bond in place, and so we are ready to take ownership of the lift station as well as the land that it's on. And so we are asking that you accept the bill of sale and approve the resolution to do so, so that we can take ownership of the sewer system out there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frampton.
So I got a question. Do we always take over the property, or is it, because I believe some communities keep their lift stations, right, and they maintain them? What's the benefit of us taking on the added expense of the lift stations, and is it something that we have to do?
So that's typically decided when the development is approved. And in some cases, there's, the lift station stays private because the sewer and the water is private on the property. In other cases, it's part of the public system, in which case other sewer, other sewage lines run through it, and so it needs to be public, same with the water. So if, so a good example is if you're, if you're building a residential development, whether apartment or single-family homes or townhomes, on the end of a run, we typically make those utilities private because they dead-end. If it's more centralized in the community, or there's water, other water, sewer customers that. or there's water, other water, sewer customers that will be being serviced on the other end of that development, then we keep it public because it has to be public. We can't, we can't pass through. So in, a good example with water is, we can never go, we can never sell water to somebody after it's gone through a private line. It always has to stay on the public line, controlled by the city. And so this is an example where the utility is located, it's got other utilities running through it, and so we're adding it to our mix.
All right, thank you. I have a motion from Mr. Frampus. I have a motion looking for a second. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Frampus, you didn't make the motion.
I did not make the motion. Can make the motion if nobody else wants to.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Frampus?
I guess I'll make the motion of the dedication of the public water and sewer systems at Sunrise Estates. And, did you say I needed to do something else, Mr. Carey?
No, and this one, I don't know where that language came from. It's just the sewer system that we're taking in this case.
Are we talking 2025-08?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion when we accept the Resolution 2025-08 as written.
Thank you, Ms. Volz.
I have a second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampus, a second from Ms. Volz. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you. Okay, council reports. Deputy Mayor Pat Bentley.
Thank you. I just have two comments. One, I'll do the easy one first. Space Coast League of Cities held their dinner last night. They have an upcoming conference, I think it's this month or next month?
Next month.
Next month. And if you want to do things like attend the breakfast that they have there, you need to get signed up. And the Space Coast League of Cities is paying for that for you this year. So I think that got voted on and decided last night. And so, also, the membership on the committees, if you want to be on one of the committees, whether it's five or six different ones, you need to get that done and put in, because they are going to be having a central meeting at the conference. But they're looking to get that closed out, and everybody gets assigned to those positions. So if you haven't yet signed up, make sure you don't sign up, obviously, for a committee that someone else is already on, because that wouldn't work too well. No. I don't know how they're going to do the guests this year, because we're actually paying for it. But I just, huh?
I do.
She'll tell you, because she paid more attention than I did.
So the Space Coast League is sharing with two other leagues locally, that we're all splitting the breakfast. Currently, they have not found a sponsor. They're going to continue searching. But what was voted on last night was that the Space Coast League will pay for Space Coast League members and your guest. And then if you do not show, you will then be charged $50 per person. So if you and your guest do not show, and you've already RSVP'd, that's $100. So just be aware.
And then secondly, kind of an idea that, or something I've been doing, and kind of getting frustrated with it. So I sent out an email today. I'm really dissatisfied with the result. I won't say blame anybody, as far as whether it's Waste Management or us, or whatever, that I'm seeing in the community. And I've been going out in the community for the last three months, every week, on my bicycle, documenting trash that's not getting picked up for all kinds of different reasons. Mr. Rode and I did sit down with Waste Management a few weeks ago, and they made some promises, and we agreed to sit down again. And I have to say, three days after that meeting, there was almost no trash left in any of the areas. They did a really good job of getting caught up. A week later, it's back. And I've got places that have not been picked up for months. And I keep putting them on the list, and I keep putting them on the list. And I've just reached kind of a frustration point that I wanted to, to say, I'm not sure the system that we have is going to work right now. In my view, now, Mr. Rode may have a different view. In my view, you're asking 10,000, I'm making that number up. I assume there's about 10,000 homes in West Melbourne? 9,700, okay. I didn't mean to exaggerate there. So it's hard to get those people to change from the way that we used to do it, to the way that the new rules are, which is you have to put all your waste into the brown container, a green container with brown lid, or they won't pick it up, period. You cannot put anything on your yard unless you call a bucket truck. And it's got to be a certain size, or they won't pick it up. And I don't know anybody that knows that rule, or is abiding by that rule. There are some. And it's been, I've seen more brown lids out there lately, especially this last week. I saw a lot of them. So I think we're doing something. But I just don't know if that's the right model, or if we should pay a little more, and not have to do what I'm doing, and what Andrew's doing, and what Diana's doing. It's just, it's frustrating. I was at the dinner table last night with the head of Waste Management here, Jordan, making me a lot of promises, but I'm just not seeing action on the ground. And so I'm also wanting to get more feedback in the loop. You know, I put these lists in, and I go around the next week, and a lot of it's still there. And then I add new places to the list, which is understandable. But I never know. So I want to put a feedback system in there somehow. And I wanted to understand, you know, I've got some homes that I think ought to be condemned, actually. And that's not a good thing. And I've put it into report now, probably for a month, and I've heard zero back. So I want to get feedback in the system, so I don't feel like I'm just wasting, maybe I am, but feel like I'm wasting my time, and that I feel like we're making progress. And I understand it may take time. I'm not trying to get to a perfect system. But if I had to pay an extra five bucks a month to get, to not have this problem, I know I would be willing to pay it now. I'll let Mr. Rode speak on it some. Thank you, Mayor.
Who's the report go to?
So what he's referencing is when a resident has a clam truck pile for the yard waste, they either go in online, or they can call to get added to the list for pickup. But there isn't a very good system to tell you, you know, it's not like Amazon's... Yep. He's submitting a report to us, and then my office is either putting them into the system, or calling Waste Management to put them into the system. And we don't get, you know, direct communication as to, as to, you know, it's two days from now, it's seven days from now, or that one got picked up. And so I think part of our conversation with Waste Management was their effort to do a better job of getting those clam truck piles picked up. And then it's also an education effort that if you just have a small pile of yard debris, that you got to put it in, you got to put it in your bucket. We've also instituted having code enforcement going around, following the garbage pickup cycle. And then they're hanging carts, they're hanging cart hangers, or door hangers, on people's carts to let them know, you know, they write on the back, hey, you've got a pile, you've got to, you've got to either call this in, here's the information to call it in, or you have to put it in your brown, you know, in order to get this picked up, you have to put it in your brown. And so that's one of the issues. But, you know, a suggestion would be to ask Waste Management to come to a council meeting, to have this discussion with them, and get that feedback. You know, to Mayor Young's point, and to Deputy Mayor Bentley's point, we've tried meeting individually with them to get better action on the clam pickup situation. And it improves short-term, but doesn't improve long-term.
Are the piles more than the three cubic yards that they're supposed to be? I know it's hard to judge, but I mean...
I would say 60% of the piles can be put in a brown container, and the residents ought to be doing that, but they don't know to do it. It's just on the side of the road.
Isn't that a communication on our part?
Yeah, but again, you're trying to communicate with 10,000 different homes.
I get it.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
We changed, we changed the way we do it, so we should be communicating to our residents that we need to get it done differently.
I agree with you, but I don't think it's feasible to get 10,000 homes to do the right thing, even though they sent out flyers, they put on door knockers. I'm telling you, I write it every week. It's not getting done. And the other 40% is their clam trucks. And I've got some that I've put on the list, same house, three months, and it's still not done.
So your solution is to go back to the old way?
You know, at some point, you know, is this how much pain we want to go through, and still not getting the job done?
This is the first year.
I know. Well, Waste Management's been out here for a long time. They won't, so you have to understand the process also. Waste Management, unless you call them, or put it in the website, which we're manually doing now, the city is, and that's a lot of fun, they will, even if they drive past it, they will not pick it up, because it messes up some metric they have. So even if it's the yard next door, they will not pick it up. And it's like, you used to, when you would drive past something, and you saw that it needed a clam truck, they would notify their own office, send a clam truck out. Now they want every resident to do that. And I just don't think we're going to get there. And I'm just fighting it, and fighting it, and fighting it. I like the old system because it seemed to work better. I don't know, Andrew, what do you think? You see some of the same stuff I see?
They have that old system in Satellite Beach, where they pay extra, and the residents don't have to call it in. And when the drivers go by, they call it in, and then the clam truck picks it up. That's how it's supposed to work. But if you read the posts, it's not working there either. They are paying the extra, and they're still not picking it up.
The old system was no cans.
Right, they left it at the curb.
So is that the old system that they're using, no cans, or are they...
I talked to Jordan last night, or the other week, many times. They don't want to put a person behind the truck to pick up the small piles. It's, I'm sure it's a liability issue.
So is the old system even an option at this?
I don't know.
I mean, it sounds like they did away with the old system, so we wouldn't even have that option.
I don't know.
In our contractor, they can't bring old trucks, and they have to have the new trucks. And the new trucks don't have the rear loader, is that correct?
Well, we, I think Waste Management has been a very good partner, and this is a point of frustration. It's a point of frustration in my office. I know it's a point of frustration for code enforcement right now. It's certainly an element of frustration in several different neighborhoods, what we call the old growth neighborhoods, right? The big trees, the bigger lots, more debris. We can certainly engage with Waste Management and see if that's an option, to go to the system that we were on, which was, they would send routes, you know, they would have drivers once a week on a route going, and just picking up every pile, right? They'd go through their route, and they would pick up the yard debris on the side of the road. And so obviously, the reason for the switch was, we were in contract negotiations with them, and the cost to go to the brown lid buckets was more reasonable than sticking with the old system. And so that's the direction we picked. But ultimately, I think Waste Management would work with us if we wanted to go back to the old system. But there would be a cost associated with that. It's certainly, I think we can all understand, it's more expensive to have two guys on an end loader truck, getting off the truck, throwing things in, and getting back on and going, versus the automated arm just dumping as it goes down the road. And so, and I don't think we have an issue with the automated arm pickup. I think the issue is with the education piece, with the debris pile, with the yard waste debris piles either being too small for a clam truck, or having the clam truck out, and people don't call in, because they just are going with the assumption that Waste Management will be able to get it. And so I think I'm happy to, I'm sure Waste Management would love the opportunity to come in front of this council and have that discussion, and work with, they've been responsive, but they haven't been successful. How about, is that fair?
Yeah, no.
They've been very responsive.
I've always voted to support Waste Management. I think historically, they've done a great job for the city. And I'm just frustrated a little bit right now. So, and they knew that when we met with Mr. Rode.
Sounds like your percentage is not...
It's terrible. It's terrible.
I mean, you're talking 10,000 residents, maybe, what, less than 10%, less, I mean, there are...
Well, that's 1,000 homes that have trash sitting out in front.
I'm using that as...
I know. Yeah. I did think also, as Mr. Rode just alluded to, that it was just the older communities, because that's kind of the ones I was looking at. I looked at Timberlake, which is a high-end, I think a very high-end community in West Melbourne, same problem. I looked at my neighborhood this week, which I think is a fairly high-end neighborhood. I've got three homes on that list that's been under for almost three weeks, in Ashley Manor. I don't get it. So I don't think it's just those communities. I'm actually gonna, next week, try other high-end communities, and other areas of where I live, and see how much the problem is there. Because I'm beginning to think it's not just those older s, they may be worse. But I think we all have that, all the communities have that problem. But I'm going to find out. Sheridan Road's a mess. There's probably 10 homes on Sheridan Road that have yard waste, huge piles out in front of them today.
If they're on the list, and...
They are.
And the pile isn't up to the three cubic yards, are they not picking it up because it's not big enough? I'm just curious.
I think most of the piles that I highlight on my list, I try to make the residents do a lot. If I put that needs a Waste Management truck on my list, there's a lot of stuff there. I mean, but if I think it's close to their rule, I say, do the work, cut it up, put it in your brown thing. So I favor the making the resident do work more than Waste Management. If I put down there it needs a truck, it's a lot of stuff.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, right. Anyway.
Ms. Volz, and Ms. Adams, you're both trying to weigh in on this.
Yeah. I had my brown can out yesterday, and they came by, and what was in there wouldn't come out. And so it was still in there, because it was a big palm frond for my tree, and I had to stuff it in there. But normally, they will shake it until something comes out. But it's still in there, and now I don't know what I'm going to do with it. I'm going to have to take it out and break it in pieces, or something, in order for it to come out. So it doesn't always work.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I like actions and solutions. So, Mr. Rode, will your office be reaching out to Waste Management to invite them to the meeting? If not, I am happy to make the phone call.
I am happy to have them at the next meeting to discuss this item.
Thank you.
Unless it's the short meeting that we talked about before, National Night Out, then we'll have them at the next meeting. Oh, that's when they'll want to be here, then. Well, we will wait till we have everyone here.
Ms. McGuire, you're trying to weigh in on this.
Yeah. I will say, similarly to what Ms. Volz said, I did have a situation where, like, I had it in my bin, and then one of the things fell out of my bin, and so they just put the can back down and drove off. And like, me and my kid were at the end of the driveway, just watching them, as like, this piece fell out, and they just kept driving off. So there's definitely issues with it. But then I also know, I talked to some of the neighbors in my neighborhood, and one of the biggest concerns is, because we have a lot of younger people that are moving into my neighborhood, and they're afraid that by calling out the clam truck, that it costs money. They're afraid that, oh, well, if I call this truck out, or if I put this ticket in, I'm going to get an increase on my bill, because now I'm doing this extra thing. So I think we should let people know that this isn't an extra fee, or an extra service charge, it's just included. You just need to let them know that you need somebody to come get it if it's big enough. Weekly roundup edition.
Yeah.
Trash pickup.
That's good feedback to know. And I can see how people would think that.
And put it in the water bill, and, not in the water bill, but on those forms that, yeah, the newsletter you send out, yeah.
Those for the e-waste as well. They don't call for the e-waste, because they think that's an extra charge, and it's not. So if we could do that. Mr. Gaylord, your turn.
I don't own a brown bin, but I would be one of those people. Anyways, just wanted to echo Mr. Bentley's sentiments that the Florida League of Cities meeting last night was great. But I also wanted to congratulate, the FLC Home Rule Hero was one of our own yesterday. So congratulations, Councilmember Adams, for being a superhero. So that's all I had to say.
Where's your cape?
No cape, haven't learned to fly, working on it.
Is that it, Mr. Gaylord? All right, Ms. McGuire?
The only item I have is I just want to say a big kudos to our police department. Since our last meeting, I had a ride-along with one of the FTOs, and it was very eye-opening to see live in action what happens when a shots-fired call comes over the radio, seeing how quickly our police responds to really anything, but mainly that call. seeing how quickly our police responds to really anything, but mainly that call. Was very eye-opening and made me have a deeper appreciation for our police force. So I wanted to say thank you to you guys.
Okay, all right, Mr. Frampton.
I have a question. Heritage Oaks and Mitten, the southeast corner property there, it seems like there's some sort of development going on there. And I know we've had a problem one before where they cleared-cut one of their properties without permission and stuff. And what's going on there?
Right. So right now, what's happening, and we're working with them, they have they have a permit with the city for pre-development, so for infrastructure development. But what's happening out there right now is actually a permit they have with the county. Part of their development calls for a six-foot wide sidewalk and then the reshaping of the drainage swale. And so that's the work that's being done out there right now under a county permit is for the reshaping of the swale and then the installation of a six-foot sidewalk.
The sidewalk's going to be different size there than...
Wider, yeah, wider. The county is pushing, anytime you have to redo a project or redo parts of a sidewalk, they're pushing from four-foot to six-foot sidewalk.
And I believe that's also six inches deep, correct?
I...
I think that's the standard that I was told now.
Yeah, I mean, they have a permit and the county's out there inspecting because they've had some issues that they've addressed and got resolved, but...
The reason they're doing it six inches deep is so a truck can drive on it.
They're, they've found that six-foot wide sidewalks, built right, last a long time.
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a couple of us went and visited Ms. Marjorie for her 100th birthday and that was included in the Weekly Roundup. Very sweet lady. It was great to see just different residents show up to support her, her family. It was really cute for her 100th birthday. So just wanted to share that. There is in the Weekly Roundup, but I also believe it's on our website, that the city has put out a therapeutic recreation survey looking, and I think that's in coordination with our new special populations coordinator, in terms of trying to get feedback from our residents, specifically the special needs population, about what they want to see in terms of opportunities in West Melbourne and recreation activities. So if you have connections to any of those populations or want to share it with your neighborhoods, I know that that survey is still open and just, you know, recently went out again in the Weekly Roundup. We did have a new business, Health Bar opened up on 192. So if you haven't been, they were really excited because they've had some delays with opening, but they are officially open. And then I wanted to recognize, Walbeard Public Schools was rated an A district. We have, and I really hope I'm not counting when I did it incorrectly, I did check the list twice. But imagine Pineapple Cove and West Melbourne School for Science all were rated As for our city. So I just wanted to give them recognition because our students and our faculty and our administration work really hard. So that is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Volz?
Yes, I did attend the League of Cities last night. It was very informative. The guy that spoke about the bills that were passed and were not passed, some of them very disappointing. But I just wanted to thank the city, and I'm not sure who went out, but I was driving south on Mitten Road and went to make a left onto Eber. And then whole turn lane was filled with somebody just dumped lumber. I don't know what happened there, but there was just big pieces of lumber, not giant, but a lot of wood. And I'm in the turn lane and I'm just going over and I'm thinking, oh, God, please don't let me get a flat tire here. And I called and I was back there maybe a couple of hours later and it was all cleaned up again. So thank whoever was out there for doing that. Was it Mr. Piccirilla?
We aim to please, yes. We got our crews out there. Even though that's county, anytime there's an object on the roadway, we respond to that.
It was just a mess.
Where was this again, please?
The turn lane to go onto Eber. Yeah, the whole turn lane was just full of lumber.
It was new lumber or old lumber with nails and things in it?
I don't know.
There was a little bit of a mixture, but our Public Works Department is always happy to acquire two-by-fours.
Yes, I'm sure there had to be a lot of, there was new lumber for sure. Okay. Anything else? All right.
Mayor, can I just say one more thing? I am having eye surgery tomorrow. Won't be able to make the recreation meeting. Are you the alternate for rec? So, you, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to find something that someone else hasn't already mentioned. Yes, the birthday party for Ms. Marjorie was very lovely, so we need to do some more of that. We need more people to turn 100 years old so that we can do that. So the TPO has sent us an invitation for the Stop on Red event. We all got an email from Megan in our email. So Stop on Red. So please read that email and let her know if you would like to come out to that. We're doing flag waving and all that kind of stuff to bring people's awareness. Division Zero, you know, please don't run over our residents, that sort of thing. Yes, so we're distracting them with flags, yes. Thank you. Well, I didn't get my Bucky signed, so I, you know, had to do the other. And so I'm just going to keep my report very short. So thank you very much. So we're going to move on to management reports. And Mr. Roddy, do you want to go before Mr. Carey?
Yep, just real briefy because mine will be much shorter than Attorney Carey's this evening. We are honing in on our Heritage Day's event and we are looking at October 16th. Thursday, October 16th is the date that works very well with, both with Rhodes Park and most importantly, with the church across the street for excess parking. So we are, we are getting close to finalizing that date, but always looking for some input. We certainly don't want to do it on a night where there's, you know, like maybe like a big League of Cities event or something. And so if you could double-check your calendar and if that night works, we will start going public with that date.
I won't be able to, that's my HOA. I have to be there.
And isn't it all also the...
Code Enforcement.
Code Enforcement.
We move those boards. We will look at, are all Thursdays, is Lead Beards once a month, right? Yep, so we will look at an alternative date to October 16th. Never mind. Strike the record. Strike the CD.
Okay. Mr. Carey?
So before we get into the legislative update, I just wanted to mention, last meeting, we had talked about the potential with the conflict with the Florida Cabinet and our budget meeting. I did talk to the state over the last couple of weeks and found out that the state can approve that administratively. So there shouldn't be a conflict. I just wanted to update you since you may have been expecting there to be a conflict at some point come up. That won't be an issue. And then I want to get into the Legislative Session Report. We try to do this a little earlier most of the time, but as you probably know, this was an unprecedented session that went over a month longer than normal. Sometimes it goes a little bit long, meaning in the order of a day or two because there's a requirement that the budget is public for 72 hours before they can pass it. So usually, session doesn't get extended more than a day or two. This was a significant extension. And the bottom line is we have some bills that we need to discuss. I'll try to be respectful of your time. And I'll try to go through it relatively quickly, but if anybody has any questions, comments or wants to discuss a particular bill more in-depth than I'm doing, feel free to chime in and let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to try to go at a fairly brisk pace unless I hear otherwise from you all. And I'm going to go in the order that they're presented in the League's report. If I mention a page number, it's the little number on the bottom here, not the page that's on the city's agenda. So the bills start on page two and the ones I'm going to be talking about are front-loaded because in the beginning of the report are the ones that passed. Two-thirds of the report is ones they monitor that didn't pass. We're really not going to talk about those. You can be aware that oftentimes bills that don't pass will come back next session. And so if there were any bills that you were following that didn't pass, it's dead for now, but it might not be dead next year. But we'll deal with it next year. I don't think there's a lot of value, especially given as late as it is to discussing things that didn't pass. But the ones that did pass, I want to start with Senate Bill 180, which is emergency preparedness. And this has a, some preemptions that we need to be aware of. This is for governments that are participating in the NFIP program. You can't adopt or enforce a look-back ordinance. Basically, what they're trying to do is make it easier for people to redevelop after a storm. They don't want local government standing in the way of people building what they've already had and replacing it if there's been a storm. They've also prohibited impact fees for reconstruction or replacement of an existing structure as long as it has the same land use and doesn't increase impact on public facilities. So basically, you know, they're not going to give anybody free rein to improve something over what they had because of a storm. But if they're building back what they already had, they want to make sure that people can do that without local government standing in the way. And then the bill also puts some requirements on the city that each city shall notify Department of Emergency Management before May 1st of each year. So we've got a new report we need to be aware of as staff, of the person designated as the emergency contact and their alternate. And counties and municipalities must post following information on their websites. So we're going to have to do some website information page for storms. And we need to have a post-storm permitting plan for expedited rebuilding. So the plan must be updated no later than May 1st annually. So that's a deadline to put in our minds as staff to, you know, make sure the public's aware of how they can rebuild if there's a storm issue. And we also have to publish annually by May 1st, a Hurricane and Tropical Storm Recovery Permitting Guide. And for 180 days after a state of emergency for a hurricane or tropical storm, any county within the area may not increase building permit or inspection fees. This is notable because a lot of our fees go into effect, I think, on October 1st. We usually try to time it with the fiscal year. If there's been a storm declared for Beard County, we wouldn't be able to do it by then. So we may need to consider moving up our fees, fee increases whenever we do them, to the beginning of the summer before hurricane season. So that's something we can discuss internally and come up with a plan, but did want to make you all aware of that. And if you've had a direct impact, then we must set up a permitting office that are, that's accessible for at least 40 hours a week in the aftermath of a storm. So people need to be able to come into City Hall basically 40 hours a week and get permits to rebuild. And we can't regulate land use or development following a hurricane for one year afterwards. Basically, you can't have a moratorium on construction or reconstruction. You can't do more burdensome comp plan amendments or... Basically, they're trying to maintain the status quo, not use the aftermath of a hurricane to restrict redevelopment rights when people, you know, have lost their home and we tell them, well, you can't build back what you've had before because we've got new requirements in place. All right, moving on to House Bill 1137. It expands a preemption, all of our favorite thing here, that prohibits a municipality from taking action that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting types of fuel sources of energy that may be supplied, used or delivered by a public utility or a natural gas transmission company. I don't think this is going to be a huge deal for us because I don't think we try to do this. We don't have, you know, we typically allow FPNL and the other utilities to do what they need to do. But, you know, since it's a preemption that affects us, I wanted to briefly mention it.
Could you mention those pages again that you're on?
So I'm on page five now. Page five in the league report, but I'm moving on to page six, which impacts all of you. As candidates and elected public officers, you are no longer by law allowed to misrepresent your armed forces service records, awards or qualifications. This is, it's called stolen valor. Basically, you can't campaign on having a military record that isn't reflected in the actual record that you've obtained as a military member. So please don't lie about...
Do people do that?
Yes.
On the regular?
I don't know how regular it is, but it's certainly something that happens probably every other year when there's a campaign. People, it's more, people tend to exaggerate their, the extent of their service rather than just straight-up lying about, you know, I was in the army when they never were. It tends to be more exaggerations, but...
But they could put on there if they were a Marine or, you know, and they have a Purple Heart or something like that, they could put that on there, which is, everything is true. And you're saying they're not allowed to do that?
They're not allowed to misrepresent. So you couldn't say you're a Purple Heart recipient if you didn't win a Purple Heart.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we're going to skip past a couple that aren't particularly relevant to us as the city of West Melbourne and go to page nine. This is the update to the Live Local policy. As I discussed when it was first passed, I think three years ago now, whenever there are new comprehensive bills that really change the state of the law for the next few years, there's always updates to it as they tweak it. Hopefully, the tweaks are to improve it and to, you know, respond to feedback from stakeholders that, you know, here's what the original law does that doesn't work. Sometimes the tweaks are to, you know, make it more invasive for us. In this case, the update for the Local, Live Local Act authorizes but does not require... Now, as I say that, remember, a couple, up until this year, we were authorized but not required or we had to consider reduced parking, but we didn't have to grant it. So I say that as a foreshadowing. So there's a new requirement to authorize a municipality to, that's owned by a religious institution and containing a house of worship regardless of the underlying zoning. So if a church wanted to build a housing development and the zoning didn't work out under this bill, now we would have to, or we could allow that, but we're not required to. You know, how they impact that or amend that in future years, we'll see. The bill specifies that Live Local Act are subject to administrative approval without further action required by the governing body or any quasi-judicial or administrative board or reviewing body. So they're reiterating that, you know, if it's a Live Local project, it can't come to you guys and we can't send it to another board in your place. And if, and here's the result of the foreshadowing I gave you earlier. If requested by an applicant, the local government must reduce parking requirements by at least 15% if it's within a quarter mile of a transit stop, a half-mile of a major hub and parking is available within 600 feet. So again, this was something in the original bill that we were required to consider reducing parking, but it didn't make us actually do it. The amendment this year now makes us do it if those criteria are met. For the city of West Melbourne, you know, we don't have a ton of public transit. We do have a few bus stops. If it's within a quarter of a mile of a bus stop, now we would have to reduce the parking if requested.
And they talk about the height restrictions within one mile. Is that within one mile of your city or could it?
So it's within one mile of the development.
It could be other cities have a higher building and then we would have to accommodate it because they have allowed...
It's within one mile of the development within your city.
It is within...
Yeah, yeah. Sorry to, yeah, so the, within one miles, it's not because you have zoning across town, it's nearby. But yeah, it doesn't, we wouldn't be wedded to say Melbourne's height restrictions if they allow 10 stories within a mile of us. No, it's our own regulations. And it also prevents us from reducing the regulations and then trying to use that to reduce the Live Local. Basically, it says if your height restrictions were, I think July 1st, 2023 is the date that was used, that you're going to live with that regardless of trying to reduce it in order to hamper Live Local development. It also prohibits a municipality from opposing a building moratorium that has the effect of delaying permitting of Live Local Act projects. So if you'll recall, we did issue a moratorium for six months on Live Local in order to update our... a moratorium for six months on Live Local in order to update our, our multi-use regulations because we didn't have citywide multi-use. And the Live Local allowed us to impose that. If somebody came to us with a project but without it in our code, we couldn't impose it. So we had to update our code, implemented a moratorium to allow us to do that so that somebody couldn't come in with a project and not do mixed use. That wouldn't be allowed now. There are certain conditions where you might be able to, where the law gives a 90-day moratorium. You know, in our case, 90 days really wouldn't have been adequate to write our ordinance and then have two readings to pass it, and no more than 90 days in any three-year period. So they've, they're trying to get rid of the moratoriums preventing Live Local. And the, oh, we have to provide a summary beginning November 20, November 1st, 2026, to provide an annual report for, to DEO, basically summarizing how many Live Local applications we had and how many were approved, that sort of thing. So it's a new report requirement that we need to store away so that we can comply with the law. The next bill, and I will say again, you know, Live Local, as much as it's loathed on the local government level, every year these bills come up, they pass unanimously, you know, regardless of party, regardless of ideology, everybody votes for these. So the, there's obviously a lot of desire in Tallahassee to, you know, to have the Live Local program and to continue tweaking it. So I don't think it's going away. 954, this is on page 10, requires each county and municipality to adopt an ordinance by January 1st of 2026. So you will be seeing that sometime before the end of the year, establishing procedures for review and approval of certified recovery residents. These are basically, for lack of a better term, the law doesn't use this term, but this is how I would describe it. My understanding of it is halfway house type of things. It's for people recovering from addictions. And they want us to establish a process so that we can approve these. I think they're tired of local governments saying we don't want that in our backyard. And so we will begin working on that ordinance and have it to you sometime before the end of the year. I'm on page 11, House Bill 683. This is regarding building permits, public construction. This requires local government that issues a change order to act within a special, specified timeframe. And we have 35 days to approve or deny the price quote. And if we don't do it within 35 days, it's deemed approved. So now we also have a shot clock for change orders. And local governments that failed to, fail to meet the requirements will be liable to the contractor for all overhead associated with the change order. So they're putting teeth behind it. So, you know, again, as staff, we need to make sure we get those processed and approved.
I'm sorry, are you talking House Bill 683?
Yes.
That was opposed?
That was opposed by the League, yes, but it passed.
Oh, so this is opposed by the League?
The League, yes.
You're not talking about the state, okay.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the, this is the League of Cities report, and they put after each bill whether the League opposed or supported the bill or monitored, which means they were neutral on it.
This is the same bill that Christie was talking about with the artificial turf and stuff?
Yeah, this one does deal with artificial turf as well. And so, so there are different aspects to this bill. But, you know, for us, the, we don't really have artificial turf allowed in our code anyways. It would really only come up in a development agreement because you can alter the code provisions for a specific project if you want. But, you know, the shot clock for the change orders definitely impacts us internally.
This, we wouldn't be able to deny it, right?
You can still deny it. You know, we would just have to, you have to be able to deny it. Otherwise, a contractor can put a change order in for anything and, you know, if we couldn't deny it, we'd have to pay it. We still have oversight over the contracts. What it means is that we can't unreasonably delay the decision to either approve it or deny it. So we have to respond within 35 days, and if we don't, it's deemed approved and we have to pay for their overhead. So, you know, again, in the past, sometimes they gave these deadlines, but there weren't really any teeth behind them. Lately, they've been trying to put teeth behind them so that we actually have to comply with them. And you've probably heard of the private provider issue for projects. The contractors can hire their own building official if they don't want to hire ours, and we have to allow them to do that. And if there's a private provider, our building official now has to issue the permit within five days after receipt of the permit application. So, and in that case, our building official's only real role is issuing the permit since their private provider does all the background work. So that's an administrative task. But again, we need to make sure we get it done.
Mr. Carey?
Yes?
What's the timeframe usually for issuing a building, that permit?
I don't know right off the top of my head. It depends on the project because some, some are issued very quickly if it's a small project. And for, you know, large projects, obviously, it takes a while because they have to go through plan review, you know, which again, for a small project is probably rather insignificant, but for a big project, I think, could take weeks.
And they have to issue within five days?
If the, but that's only if there's a private provider. So that's basically saying the private provider's done all of the plan reviews and everything. They're turning it over to us just for the administrative job of issuing the permit so that they can begin work. All right, so House Bill 1255, we're on page 12 now, is an education bill, so normally wouldn't really impact us too much, but it does have a couple of preemptions impacting municipalities. There's a charter school preemption that basically says if a charter school meets the requirements of state law, we must administratively approve the school's site plan or development application. And it prohibits municipalities from requiring charter schools to obtain a special exception or conditional use under our local land development code. So those are obviously significant changes because it takes it out of your all's review and, and puts it on staff and also, you know, waive some of the normal zoning that they would have to go through. House Bill 551 is the simplified permitting process for fire prevention. Our fire prevention and, and is done by the county, so it doesn't really impact us, you know, internally, except to the extent that it requires us to establish a simplified permitting process. And we might be able to bootstrap onto the county since they do our inspections. I'll need to do a little more research. I'll probably reach out to Morris and see, you know, what he thinks if we can, you know, as long as they're doing our, our inspections, if we can use their ordinance and maybe pass a resolution saying we're doing that or something. I'll look into that and figure it out, but we will need to at least have a process in place. House or Senate Bill 1080 on page 13, this is more land development regulations. This is for the shot clock for development permits. So basically, this is saying that we have to specify in writing information that must be submitted in an application for certain approvals. And it requires us to confirm receipt of an application for development program, permit or order within five days. So that's something that will obviously impact the planning department. 784 is also a planning bill. It amends the statute that requires plat, submit, or replat submittals to be reviewed and approved administratively. And we have to designate an administrative authority to review, process, approve, and deny the submittal. So if you don't recall, last year, we dealt with a new ordinance that basically said that final plats are approved administratively. They don't come back to you. And so this kind of expands upon that. And page 17, skipping ahead, because this is something I emailed you all about, but we'll mention it here as well. Senate Bill 268 creates a public records exemption for partial home addresses and telephone numbers of public officers and their spouses and adult children, as well as names, home addresses, telephone numbers, dates of birth, and the names and location of schools, daycare facilities attended by minor children of public officers. And under the bill, as a city, the bill uses the term city commissioner, but you still can take advantage of that as a city council member. But you have to request it with the agency that holds the records. It doesn't happen automatically. So if you want to take advantage of the public records exemption, you need to go to the agency that holds the records and tell them that you would like to do that, and they will process that. And that is all I have. If you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, that is the session wrap-up for this year.
All right.
When are you into the good items?
There are no good items, Mr. Rhodey. You've been around this block long enough to know.
This is very good. Thank you very much for providing this for us. It's quite interesting reading. Anything else? Any other comments before we adjourn? All right, don't everybody rush the door. We are adjourned.